Hi, it is 6:02. Welcome to the April 5th Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order.
I'll call the Concord School Committee meeting to order.
No, we don't need to do. Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay. And we do need to do a roll call as we have one member who is joining us remotely. So go ahead.
Booth, I, for present?
Marana, present.
Mustafi, present.
Raini, present.
Rankin, present.
And Wilson, present for region. Okay. And with that, I'll think I'll take a, I'd like to note that we are being recorded. And we will be adjourning to executive session until 6:30 if somebody would like to make a motion to that effect.
The Concord School Committee and the Concord Carlisle School Committee will enter into executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the CCHS tutors and CPS CCHS bus drivers unions. And purpose seven to comply with or act under authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, specifically MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 22A and F, with regard to the review and approval of executive session minutes from March 10, 2022. And under purpose one, under which the March 10, 2022 executive session was held, to return to an open session at 6:30 PM. I saw move.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Booth, I.
Marana, I.
Mustafi, I.
Raini, I.
Rankin, I.
Wilson, I, for region. Yep, okay. See you back at 6:30. Thank you. Hi, good evening. Welcome back to the April 5th Joint Concord Carlisle Concord School Committees Meeting. I'll note we are being recorded and we are returning to you to open session right now beginning. Well, first of all, I just want to say welcome to everybody. We have quite a crowd here today and online, in person. This is very exciting. I want to note it's the beginning of Ramadan also. So Ramadan Kareem started this weekend. And, um, and well, we've got a lot, we've got a lot to talk about tonight. And so let's get going, beginning with our student update.
Yes, so Darcy, I have our presentation. I think I can. Oh, yes. Okay, perfect. So it's a bit of a quick one this week. But first of all, the spring sports season, as I'm sure you've heard about, is off to a strong start. We've won, I believe, all of our games so far, which is always nice to see. I think it's exciting and there's definitely been a lot of school spirits rounding those. And then this past Friday was the end of quarter three at the high school. So it's always like a big push with lots of tests and exams and things leading up to it. But now we're in quarter four, so kind of a fresh start. And then just another like sort of new thing, sophomores have begun meeting with their guidance counselors this week. And we're sort of discussing the results of this program that we all completed called U-Science. Darcy, I don't know if you want to jump in describing it, but essentially it's just a series of like aptitude tests that it then uses to sort of recommend like different careers and colleges and things that you might want to look into as you, you know, get further into your high school career.
Yeah, definitely. As sort of we're starting to get into the upperclassmen years, our guidance counselors are wanting us to kind of focus on what could potentially be good career areas for us or good colleges and like what skills we have. So that's a program we're partaking in. And it also is perfectly aligned with a lot of seniors are now getting into their colleges or choosing between the colleges they've gotten into. So there's been a lot of that at the school. And then this Monday, CCHS's new attendance policy went into effect. So it's a big difference from what we had before, which was essentially that any unexcused absence or tardy, or like unexcused tardy, didn't really affect you unless a teacher wanted to specifically take it into consideration.
I think the problem was that there was no real like universal policy in doing them.
We didn't really have an attendance policy at all, or if it was, it was like teacher determined, which isn't the best and we want kind of like a unified school policy. So we returned back to pre-pandemic pandemic rules, which is sort of a system, if Harry wants to jump in that all too as well. It's sort of a system of if you get an unexcused absence, there's different consequences depending on how many there are, as well as the unexcused tardy and teachers and admin and student senate work to implement this. And so far, I've heard mostly negative responses because most students are accustomed to the kind of ability to not have a policy at all. So there is like some negative feedback at first, but hopefully kind of as the transition smoothened out a bit, it won't be, people will get used to it and it'll just become normal again.
Yeah, I think that's kind of to be expected to because it definitely is kind of a dramatic change. And then also Spring Spirit Week is coming up, which is very exciting. We have a few events planned. There's going to be a cornhole tournament, which I'm personally super excited for. We're hoping to have 64 teams and there are going to be food trucks and things. So just going to be a really great time. We're also doing like a scavenger hunt throughout the building, all sorts of stuff to look out for. Yeah, I think that's really it. We didn't have like a super long presentation this week, but obviously if you guys had any questions or anything like that.
Yep. Um, yeah, it's sort of just been a transition in the period between quarter three and quarter four. Nothing too big happening, but just some new things going on at the school.
Yeah. Harry and Darcy, did you hear anything from the seniors about the hypnotist and some of the other events last week?
Oh.
Oh, yeah. I had a great time at the hypnotist show. Unfortunately, as an underclassman, I wasn't able to get hypnotized, but I thought it was so entertaining. I have lots of photos and videos from the show. I thought it was great. And I think it's nice to be able to have events like that again, since obviously it was postponed for a while.
Yeah, I heard nothing but positive feedback. I know it was really well attended and a lot of students enjoyed it.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. That was a wonderful mix of stuff about academic stuff. The U-Science thing sounds fascinating to learn more about later on. And we definitely look forward to seeing pictures of what Spirit Week has to bring. So thanks.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
All right. So now we are at public comment and I just want to note that tonight we are going to try, well, this is, it's a little bit about trying things new. I think our multicultural text is about expanding, expanding things. We're going to try, we're going to have public comments for 15 minutes right now. We do have fifth graders from Willard here. And we have a presentation with guests coming to talk about multicultural literature. But after we get through the multicultural literature presentation, we will open up additional public comment options as we go through our discussion topics. So if you have a comment to make about the upcoming discussion item, and only the really next discussion item, please raise your hand. And just to let you know that we understand that 15 minutes right now is a short period of time, but we will be opening up the floor to public participation under the regular, you know, the three minutes, please state your name and address. And this is a meeting, you know, chance for members of the community to share ideas, thoughts, concerns, but not necessarily not engage in a dialogue. So with that, we will begin with our public comment, our first public comment session, 15 minutes with people in the room with us. So if we have members of the public here who have public comments, please raise your hand in live or make yourself known.
So come on up and if you're, anybody making public comments? If not, we'll move along.
Okay, then we will open it to people in the pub, in the online. If you are virtually with us, please use the raise hand feature in the participants tab or reactions tab. Or you can turn on your video and wave to us. So let us know that you'd like to speak. Right? No?
Okay.
I don't see anybody. All right. Well, we look forward to hearing from people if they have thoughts later on. So I think with that, then we can welcome our fifth graders from Willard. I'll let Cynthia.
Yes, we'll welcome our fifth graders from Willard and Ms. Rivers. Is that who the adult in the room is? So the teacher and who wants to kick it off, Dr. Hunter, or we just go?
I think I'm just going to turn it over to them. Mr. Lucy's here too. I had the privilege of previewing this already, so I'm excited to see, see them back and in such a public setting.
Ms. Squire, who might have had some of these students in her class, maybe, I'm guessing? No? Yes.
So I'm Matt Lucy and these are the fantastic fifth graders in Ms. Rivers' class. And the reason why they're here today is because they truly understand what they're talking about. It is not the fact that they learned something on a, on a ditto master as we had when we were kids. It wasn't because they were told by their teacher, this is what you need to learn, but rather they accessed the information. It just so happened that Dr. Hunter came by and said,
Good doctor.
Can I come into a classroom? And I said to Kim, I said, what do you got going today? She goes, oh, the kids are learning about water. And so what I love about these students is they're representative of Willard, but also special students who have the courage to present, to know. And they also then presented at our 22nd Annual Willard Science Fair this past weekend, which is representative of the reopening of schools. And it's also representative of Kim Rivers and the rest of the Willard staff willing to take risks, try new things. You need to release yourself as a teacher to enable kids to gain, to grasp, to go. And you will be amazed with what the students are presenting to you tonight. An old adage is if you want to see real student learning, watch what they do after it's taught, how it's refined, how it's retained. There'll be no scripts tonight. They can speak from their understanding. So Kim, great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight. And parents, thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedules to come and bring your kids for this really awesome night. So what you're going to see tonight is a TED Talk. So we've created a TED Talk Junior on the topic of water. And you're going to see artists, scientists, mathematicians, writers, readers, summarizers, brain framers. We're going to see some creative movement. No hand signals for me?
No.
Anyhow, you're going to, you're going to get a little taste of everything. And this is truly an interdisciplinary unit. And this is the culmination of weeks of cooperative learning, partner work, group work, compromising, sharing, laughing, being silly, learning new dances. And just an all around wonderful time. These kids are amazing, as you're about to see. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ayla and my group and I studied water in foods and water in our body. So Liam is going to talk, is going to first talk about water in our body. Humans need water. Why water is so important? Did you know human beings can live weeks without food but not water? You can only live four to seven days without water depending on conditions. And, and you must drink four to eight glasses of water each day depending on your size. I studied water, fruits and vegetables. Did you know that fruits and vegetables contain at least 70% water? Well, that's just the beginning. Some vegetables, like cucumbers, contain 97% water. Vegetables and fresh food always have a smaller percentage in cooked food or food that isn't fresh. For example, tomatoes are fresh food. It contains 97% water. Potato chips aren't as fresh and contain less than 1% of water. Different fruits and vegetables have different amounts of water. Avocados have 73%, summer squashes have 97% and so on. I did water in junk foods. Drinking water is only part of the water we need. The other part comes from foods. You'll be surprised at how little water is in some junk foods. So pretzels have 3% water. Pizza has 47% water. Popcorn has 5%. Chicken nuggets have 47%. Bread has 37%. French fries have 35% and potato chips have less than 1%. Now for our human infographic. Did you know that the human body makes up 70% of water? 80% of water makes up of our brain. 83% of water makes up of our blood. About 90% of water makes up of our lungs. And here's what things water does in our body. Water lubricates body joints. Water keeps body temperature stable if you think of sweat. And water also aids in digestion if you think of spit. Thank you. We hope you enjoyed my part of the TED Talk. Next is water and ecosystems. Water and ecosystems is very important. If there is no water in ecosystems, the plants and animals in the ecosystems would not thrive. Nature's fresh water is distributed among many lands and places. Ecosystems are made up of plant life and animals in a land feature. These ecosystems depend on water. Some ecosystems start in the Rocky Mountains where snow melts into streams and rivers. These rivers help force the vastest waterways of the earth. Home to the cougar, elk, moose, mountain goat, bighorn sheep, beaver, mermaid. These rivers flow down the mountains and head toward the ocean. Smaller bits of rock soil and minerals are carried downstream. Some of the sediment is deposited on the riverbanks. The rivers flow, the rivers flow into bayous and straits that line the coast. This creates deltas. Deltas create new ecosystems such as mudflats, marshes and peatbogs. Peatbogs are bogs with, bogs with wet, muddy ground, too soft to support a heavy body. Migrating birds such as sandpipers, yellow legs and black dove will line the ecosystem being healthy. Humans also need green water and deltas for boating, swimming, fishing. Finally, the rivers flow into the oceans, forming a nutrient-rich ecosystem with kelp forests. Kelp forests are home to small fish which are food for big fish birds. As you can see in this frequency brain frame, water takes a big cycle throughout different ecosystems. If there is no water, all these ecosystems and the animals and plants in them would fail. Thank you. Mustafi Charlotte with a live demonstration of all the water on earth. This is a live demonstration to help you visualize the amount of water on earth.
There we go. Mr. Polly's got to get the best shot.
This drop of water, this one drop of water represents all of the water in its atmosphere. These two drops of water represent all of the water in Earth's lakes and rivers. These six drops of water represent all of the water, all of the moisture in Earth's soil and ground ice. These nine milliliters of water represents all of Earth's groundwater. This 20.5 milliliter of water represents all of Earth's frozen freshwater and ice caps and glaciers. Volume of freshwater in this cylinder totals to about 30 milliliters or 3% of the 1,000 milliliters that represented all of Earth's water. The 970 milliliters left in the beaker represents the amount of water in Earth's ocean. It is saltwater. The 30 milliliters of water in the cylinder represents the total amount of freshwater on earth. Remember, 29.5 milliliters of this water is frozen in glaciers or underground. What does this mean? Very small volume of freshwater on the surface of earth is very limited. Most of the freshwater is in ice caps, glaciers, underground and underground. That leaves only 1% of Earth's frozen fresh, Earth's freshwater in all the lakes, rivers, soil, ground ice and atmosphere. There's only 1% of all, there's only 1% of water for all living things on earth. We can only drink that 1% of water. So do your part and conserve water. Next up is what would happen if there's too much or too little water. I'm Imogen.
I'm Aiden.
And I'm Brooke.
And we research what happens if there's too much or too little water. What happens when there's not enough water? When there's too much rain, not enough sun, not enough rain, too much sun and water depletion, it can cause droughts and people have to water their lawns less. This happens in Concord as well during the summer. You're only allowed to water your lawns once or twice a week. Livestock and crops can die because of too much sun and ecosystems cannot thrive like they do when they have water. Lightning can strike dry wood and start wildfires. This is a picture of the Ascar River in Maine. This picture was taken during drought and if you look closely, you can see the rocks in the bottom of the river and stone near the top. This picture was taken in the same place just five months later during a minor flash flood. And you can't see the rocks in the bottom of the river and it's almost to the top. When there's too much rain or lots of snow melting, it can lead into dam breaking, which can cause flooding. Water plants can get flooded, which means that water gets contaminated and some people have to boil their water to get rid of the germs. Floods can also be very destructive. The 1993 Mississippi River flood killed 50 people and caused $15 billion in damage. This is a picture of Egg Rock and Concord. Egg Rock is where all the rivers in Concord meet. This picture was taken during a flash flood and the water's almost to the plaque. This picture was taken in the same place and during a drought. And the water level of the rivers in Concord had, was very low and so was the water around Egg Rock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the water supply. I'm Finley.
I'm Quinn.
I'm Paige.
We researched about water supply. The steps to this is water source, water treatment. First, we're going to start with water supply. Towns, um, sources can be surface water, lakes, rivers or groundwater. Dams can also be a source. Dams catch the natural flow of water and this is called a reservoir. Groundwater is often cleaner than surface water though, but groundwater and surface water still have to go through a certain level of treatment before entering our faucets. Let's talk about treatment. The first step to treatment is called chemical addition. This is when chemicals including chlorine, aluminum sulfate and sometimes lime soda ash are added to the water and the chemicals are rapidly mixed together to make a chemical reaction. Next, we have coagulation and flocculation. Coagulation is when the chemicals continue to react with each other and come to gather to make bigger particles. Flocculation is when we take particles out. Then we have sedimentation. This is when the water and the flocculation particles move into a sedimentation basin. The last step to water treatment is filtration. After sedimentation, the water goes through filters made of sand, gravel and sometimes charcoal. Filteration removes any particles left in the water that we didn't remove during flocculation. Now we're going to talk about water storage. Every single day in the United States, 40 billion gallons of water are distributed to customers. It's a lot. Water storage tanks, which are made, are made on the high ground so that water can travel faster to customers and we can save energy. This also, they also, they also hold water in certain spots. I don't, oh yeah, they hold water in reserve so that you can use water at all times of the day, like when you're getting ready for work. Utility sample and test water to make sure that it's clean so that customers aren't drinking water, so that customers don't drink water that makes them sick. If the water isn't clean, they'll take the water out and they'll go back through the treatment process. That was our water supply. Next, we have indoor water usage and top ten ways to save water.
I'm Ruby.
I'm Lydia.
I'm Caroline. And we're going to tell you about, about indoor water usage and the top ten ways to save water.
30% of our water is used for flushing toilets. 26% of our water is used for washing machines.
20% of our water is used for showering and 19% is for washing dishes.
90% of our water is used for brushing teeth and 19% of our water is used for washing hands. Now we have the top 10 ways to save water. Number 10, water your lawns or your plants in the evening or in the morning. Because when the sun is beating down on it, it just quickly evaporates all the water and it would be left and there would be no water left. Number nine, keep swimming pools covered. Just like the grass, when you leave your swimming pool cover, like not on, it will evaporate the water and you'll just be left with a dry swimming pool. Number eight, use a broom or the, or rake, not the hose, to remove debris from walkways and/or driveways. Number seven, adjust the height of your lawnmower to cut your grass higher. A lawn height of two and a half to three inches helps protect the roots from the heat stress and reduce the loss of moisture of, to evaporation. Number six, when you wash your dishes or brush your teeth, only run the faucet half full power because you're wasting a lot of water when it's full power. Number five, cool your drinking water in the refrigerator instead of running the tap because when you're running the tap, it's wasting a lot of water. Number four, run the dishwasher or the lawn, or the laundry machine only when it's full. Because if you're washing your, if you're washing your clothes only if it's half full, that's just wasting the same amount if you do it for a full load. Number three, clean vegetables in a pan of water under a running, under a running tap. Then give your plants a drink with the used water. Number two, be a drip detective. Check all the faucets, toilets and appliances for leaks. A leaky faucet can waste up to 1,225 gallons of water a year. And finally, number one, take a shower instead of a bath. A bath uses 70 gallons of water. Well, shower only uses 10 to 25. That's a big difference. We hope you enjoyed our presentation and learned a few ways to save water in your house.
Yes.
I think you should face your parents. We got to look at you.
So this, this is a creative movement showing the three forms of water. This first form is being showed right here and it is the solid form, also known as ice. If the solid form, the molecules, as you can see, are packed together in a single group. If the, if the temperature decreases, then the ice will melt into the liquid form, also known as water. As you can see, the molecules are spreading out and taking more space. If water heats more.
If water heats more, if the water heats up more, then it will evaporate and turn into water vapor. As you can see, the water vapor takes up a lot of space. When the water vapor cools down, it returns to its liquid form and if it cools down even more, it turns back to its solid form. Thank you for your time. Thanks.
I'll start off. That was filled with so much information and joy. Can you ask for anything more from anybody? So, uh, I love the love of, of water and I know you'll keep this with you for the rest of your life, uh, this project, so, um, you're very lucky.
When people tell us something, sometimes it's hard for me to remember, but when they tell me and show me and they're enthusiastic about it, then I pay special attention. I learned some new words. Riperian, did I get it right? Oh, and I had to write this one down. Flocculation? Can, can I go home and impress other people by using that word? No, thank you so much. It was lovely. What a wonderful way to teach us. Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanna say, can you guys get back to one next meeting?
Oh, I have more, more in store for you. Yes.
I definitely learned a lot and I have to compliment you guys and your presentation skills. I mean, that's tricky to get up in front of everyone and know that you're also live on TV, so we have viewers at home. And if you want, you can actually watch your presentation after because it will all be on Minute Man Media. So for parents that caught it from the back, you can see it from the front because Mark did it from the front, which is great. And thank you to your teacher because it really, um, you know, shows us what you're doing in your classroom every day and they clearly have.
Does Carrie have any comments?
So I have a serious question. Have us old folks done a good enough job protecting the water? Yeah, I, I, we, we heard that answer. Okay.
Work to do.
So, so obviously we're gonna need some help.
All right. Okay. Thank you. You could stay for the whole meeting or you should probably go home. Thanks, everybody. Data chips. Cucumbers. Thank you, Miss Rivers.
You're welcome. Thanks for having us.
Oh, of course. Anytime.
30% of water gets wasted in the toilets, you know.
There's low floor toilets.
Doesn't that make you think?
The best one they gave was the, "Don't cut the grass so low."
Yes.
We had a whole conversation after they presented about how I needed to go back to Maine. I didn't know that. Tip, so we didn't, didn't burn the grass out so fast. All right. Thanks, Mark, for making that. So such a good visual. I was gonna say, that's what it's all about. Let's not forget.
This was so much fun.
That was awesome. That's right. All right.
All right. Back to our agenda. Do we have more? Do we have anybody else reading or children? Lori?
Not tonight.
Okay, so we'll do the reading of the minutes. Maybe a little less exciting. Can I, I, you know, get a motion to accept the minutes from open session, March 2022?
So moved. Second.
Okay, uh, roll call. Oh, or discussion, discussion. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, roll call. We, yeah, because we've got a remote person.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Morano, I for both.
Well, stop the I for region.
Rainey, I for both.
And Wilson for, sorry.
Rank and I for both.
Wilson for region. Okay. Um, and on to correspondence. So we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, uh, correspondences that came in through the region or combination of.
You got any specific.
Region, yeah. All but two about, um, about Mecho parents, um, and DEI, one about reporting protocols and one about ECO. So, and then, uh, so chairs and liaison reports. I know that Court, you're gonna speak to us about Human Rights Council Award and.
Yeah, my, my pleasure to, uh, share with you that two student groups were the recipient of the Concord Carlisle Human Rights Council Climate for Freedom Award. This is the first time the Human Rights Council has, uh, brought two community groups forward for this honor and, uh, they, uh, recognized the Gender and Sexuality Alliance at the middle school and that, uh, was founded by Laura Regis and students and the school leadership and is now, uh, advised by Hannah Vincent and Donna Amadon. And secondly, the CCHS Spectrum Club, uh, they were present and did a wonderful job as well, um, with a presentation at the award ceremony at the high school on Sunday. And the Spectrum Club is advised by Bealoprett and, uh, Ben Tendall. And we want to, uh, recognize them again tonight and congratulate them on the award from the Human Rights Council.
Thanks for, thanks for being there, Court. Thanks for.
One other minor item and that is, uh, uh, because I don't see a place for it in the Concord section, just quick note that the middle school building committee designs subcommittee meets to, uh, review recent progress on design of the middle school and that'll be a week from Thursday, April 14, 7:30 in the morning, and that will be, uh, available remotely as well. I think, I think it's all remote. It's all remote.
Talking about going in person, but we aren't, uh, we didn't settle it yet.
Quite there yet.
Yeah.
So, uh, and, and know that that will be on the School and Town website, uh, in terms of a link, uh, if you're interested, please join us. Thank you.
And then I haven't heard back from anybody else. No, I mean, only that we're gonna continue our DEI training on, I'll just say the date again, which is, uh, April 12 from four to seven. And our next DEI meeting is May 11th. We just have to talk about times, which I have to get with Dr. Hunter and Paul Martin on, um, just because we might need to switch the time up a little bit. It's at 10:30 earlier. Yes. I, one of our members is conflict.
Also one more, um, liaison report, Concord Carlisle Adult and Community Education met last Friday. They're still looking for volunteers, so, uh, please, uh, consider volunteering, especially for members coming from Carlisle. We have an update about drivers at, uh, all the spots for, um, it appears that all the spots for, for driving classes during this, uh, vacation, upcoming vacation have failed. And that's it.
Thank you. I was just gonna offer a thank you to the League of Women Voters. I co, I was a panelist along with, uh, Chris Reynolds of the Finance Committee on Friday for First Friday and I went through our budget, our, our Warren articles, and Chris did the same for the town. It was well attended and it's posted on their webpage if anyone wants to view it. And on MMN as well. Yes.
Okay. And so with that, I think we'll go to COVID update discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, the good news is I had so little to share, I didn't make a separate report. I'm just pulling up the dashboard, which feels like progress. So we're definitely trending down over the last few weeks. Eighty-eight was that we get with the Peabody spike and it's come down since then. No trends of any kind of patterns or spread at school. It's all isolated cases and that's great news. So it's been, uh, been all going in the right direction and we're still pool testing and handing out antigen tests. This is pretty stable at about 1,300 a week. The highest at the elementary school is the lowest at the high school. Um, and there's no sign from the state of stopping that program, so we're gonna participate as long as they're funding it, I think is the plan. And, uh, COVID has fallen into the backdrop again. Knock on wood. All right.
Okay. Great. Uh, and then, so we have a multicultural literature presentation.
Yeah, I think Kristen's on Zoom, so I think we'll throw it over to her and she can introduce the staff that are with us and frame, frame the presentation for us.
Yeah, I'm gonna start by asking the members of the committee who are with us on Zoom to, you are all doing it. Nice. Uh, great. And I'm gonna share my screen so we can all see the presentation. So anytime we have, um, a curriculum change, we have a big committee and this is no different. There we go. Uh, so we had a large committee to look at this particular aspect of curriculum and we're so excited to present to you today. Usually anytime we look at any part of curriculum, we have a pre-K to 12 committee. And we, it takes multiple years to make decisions, look at standards, um, understand best practices and then implement. And this is no different. So, uh, we are, uh, coming to the end of our second year and we will, um, be having more work on this next year. So we presented this, um, to the administrative team on March 29th last week and today we are happy here, to be here and presenting to you. So in summary, um, we seek to implement policies that closely align with our district's strategic initiative to become a more inclusive culture. That was part of our five years ago, um, strategic plan. And in this case, it includes careful selection of the literature that students read in English classes, um, all the way through, can, from kindergarten all the way through grade 12. So last year, 2020, 2021, we had a committee of middle school and high school educators. So there were, of course, reading chapter books and so forth, um, to design a process to support this strategic initiative and how we select those core texts. And we're gonna talk about that. Uh, and this year we have expanded our committee to add elementary educators and look at how we want to, uh, work for anti-bias curriculum, but also curriculum, um, and literature selection that gives us what we call windows and mirrors. Mirrors meaning we want every student to be able to see themselves in our curriculum. Windows meaning we want students to have literature as an opportunity to learn about other cultures, to learn about people who are different from themselves. So here's our main characters, um, taken in a snapshot. We'd have all our meetings on, um, Zoom, so I'm just gonna introduce them. Um, and if you're online with your camera open, just wave if you can. So Kate Squire is a grade four teacher at Willard, also president of the Concord Teachers Association. Kari O'Rourke is a librarian at Alcott. Amelia Burns, a grade four teacher at Thoreau. Sarah Okers-Bowwinko, eighth grade teacher at CMS. Joyce Carter, the ELA specialist at Thoreau. Sharon Hayne, ELA specialist at Willard. Kate James, a grade five teacher at Willard. Molly Gleason, who is a special education teacher at Alcott. Sydney Now Pomponi, uh, grade five teacher at Willard. Andrew Namichi, you know well, our DEI director. Marisa Paleotti is a teacher at Thoreau. Kate Fleming is the chair of the English department at the high school. Jen Cody is the chair of the English department at the middle school. Dora Golding is a English teacher at the high school. Alton Price is a grade six teacher at CMS. Nina Davidson is an English teacher at the high school. And Dr. Paula Martin, you know well, she's our consultant on cultural competency. Deb Jemison is the acting Mecho director and, um, I am yours truly. We also worked with a, uh, curriculum consultant, Dr. Kimberly Parker. She is a literacy consultant, was a longtime English teacher, actually at Cambridge Ringe and Latin, um, broke all kinds of records in working with, uh, black Latinx and other children of color and increasing literacy. Um, and now she's gone national. Andrew and I met her at a, a big, uh, teaching conference. She runs the Crimson Summer Academy at the Harvard University and she is writing a book. It's come, it's come out, we bought it for everybody, um, called Literacy is Liberation: Working Towards Justice Through Culturally Relevant Teaching. So we're so excited. Uh, she was the recipient of the National Council of Teachers of English, um, award in 2020. Um, and she's co-founder of Disrupt Text and 31 Days BIPOC and so forth. So we're very excited. She led one of our professional development paths for educators this year and will do, uh, again next year. So as, uh, we have the other nine presenters here, they're just gonna jump on, unmute themselves and talk to you about the slides.
Our goal as a committee is to provide students with meaningful experiences with literature beyond the skills and knowledge we have selected, um, for texts in our past. Um, a phrase that often came up, as Kristen had mentioned, was that we want books that serve as windows and mirrors. We want, um, books that help students to form positive attitudes towards other people, races, and culture. We want also to support students of forming, affirming images of themselves. We want the literature we're selecting to provide students with a positive and authentic representation of themselves. The Cultural Competency and Literature Committee has developed a process for reviewing and adopting texts with these goals at the forefront of our work.
Good evening. In the creation of a review tool, uh, the resources that you see were used. I'm just gonna just say, as a bit of a background, I currently sit on the Bias Review Committee for DESI, MCAS, and the College Boards. And we, uh, review all the materials that every student will, um, access using tools, using, um, bias review process in order to ensure that every student can access those particular assessments. In the case of, of here in Concord, we're using pre-K to 12. I looked at and brought to the committee, uh, several, uh, tools, culturally responsive curriculum scorecard, the social justice standard, the anti-racist ELA curricular core values, Washington model, uh, curriculum, a critical analysis of a curricular unit, and other Washington models for the evaluation of bias content in instructional materials. The committee, as you will see later, uh, we took these materials, reviewed them, and adapted those materials for ELA, for English Language Arts, uh, to provide a tool that teachers could use, um, effectively, efficiently. And not only that, they are quantitative in nature, uh, looking for, you know, does this exist or does this not exist? So as you will see, we have, um, a middle school, high school assessment review tool, pre-K to two and three to five. These, uh, these tools are works in process. Uh, the, we continue to adapt, uh, to fit, uh, you know, the scope of what's being taught and curriculum. And for now, this resides in the home of, of English Language Arts.
The National. Thank you, Dr. Martin. The anti-racist ELA curricular core values, uh, the NCTE, which is also stands for the National Council of Teachers of English, is a hundred-year-old organization. which is also stands for the National Council of Teachers of English, is a hundred-year-old organization. And in fact, the NCTE is the nation's oldest organization of pre-K through graduate school literacy educators who are dedicated to counteracting racism and racial bias in teaching materials, instructional methods, and programs for language arts, English, and humanities. As you heard from my colleagues before me, our Cultural Competency and Literature Committee is leading the adoption of multicultural texts, K through twelve. We strongly believe that in order for teachers to be culturally responsive in teaching linguistically and culturally diverse students, the set of anti-racist ELA curricular core values that you see before me must be aligned with the, with our adoption of multicultural texts. As part of the national movement toward educational equity and justice in our increasingly diverse society, these core values illustrate what a true anti-racist English Language Arts ELA curricula should provide for students. For example, as we adopt multicultural texts, we must include books written by diverse authors who write to reflect the culturally diverse lives and experiences of our students in the classroom. This, in a way, provides the time and space for students to investigate cultural privileges and the historic experiences of oppression against historically marginalized groups. At the same time, the adoption of multicultural texts invites our teachers to foster intercultural communication, awareness, and respect for diverse perspectives and an embrace of human differences with their students in their classroom. Thank you. Over to you, Joyce.
Thanks, Andrew. Sharon and I worked on the K-two tool. So for our youngest students, we wanted an equity tool that is straightforward and user-friendly, thinking that in the lower grades, our students encounter lots of books. And practically speaking, our tool needs to be meaningful, but also easy to use. In the lower grades, children may hear or read many books every day because picture books don't have many words, and they depend on illustrations to add depth and detail. Our plan is to practice using this tool during our summer work, looking at new books. Then we will see how helpful the tool is and decide if there are changes that we want to make to it. At Thoreau, in the last couple of years, we've been lucky to have the chance to purchase text set bundles that give us more of an opportunity to make connections across the curriculum. So using an example from kindergarten, we have a new family text set, Taking Care of Each Other, that ties in really well to our health and social studies curricula. We have already discovered that some of the excellent new books we are lucky to have shine a light on older, more one-dimensional books. So we hope that this tool will help us take a look at our books with a lens of diversity and let go of books that may be stereotypical. The book covers on this slide show a mix of older and newer books that we have in our book room and classroom libraries. Moving forward, we will focus on using this tool for new books. And perhaps in the future, we can use this tool to study the equity of books that we already own. When we look at books this summer, we want to choose excellent literature that reflects the lives of our children. We want our kids to find joy in learning and a deep desire to read. As Kristen and others have mentioned before me, our goal is to encourage and respect understanding of diverse cultures. The discussions that teachers elicit around these books will be with the intention that children can look into a mirror and see a reflection of themselves and can be offered a window into another child's experience. Sharon, you're next.
Thank you, Joyce. So I just wanted to take a few minutes and share with you the tool that Joyce and I worked on for grades K to two. You will see a lot of similarities with the intermediate grades three to five as well. The beauty, the beauty of this tool and the purpose of it overall is for us as staff or anyone who's going to take the time to take a look at some of these books that we would like to use in our classrooms is to reflect upon the biases that exist in, exist in texts that we are going to select to use. So I think the beauty of this tool lies in being together with people on a grade level or with your ELA specialist and really going through the book and reflecting and looking at it. So we decided that there, as you see on this slide at the top, it says a bias review should consider the following elements. We've chosen five large elements that actually embed some of the other ones that are mentioned there that I wanted to share with you. And on the, there's a front page that you will also see below that, that each a staff member in a group maybe of grade level colleagues or ELA specialist colleagues will complete. And it asks for the book title, the author, and if known, any of the author's authenticity of the author's perspective and background and how that could influence the book. A copyright date, the type of book, is it a picture book, an early chapter book, fiction, nonfiction, as well as the grade level? What will the teaching purpose be? Is it a read aloud book? Or is it something that will be used in small guided reading groups? And one component Joyce mentioned, which will be important, what are the skills that will be addressed in using this book? What are the standards that we will be hoping to meet? So the five key areas that you see, three of them right here on your slide. One is gender and sex. The other one is multicultural. The other one is persons with disabilities. Another one is socioeconomic status, and the last one is family. Within each of these elements are a list of standards, and I think you could see the breakdown of those. And I just wanted to share one from every one of them because I know it's hard to read. So for example, in gender and sex, male, female, and gender non-conforming characters reflect qualities such as leadership, imagination, courage, and integrity. And there's a rating skill of three points. If the standard is clearly articulated or inferred, that will get two points. If it's a limited presentation of the standard one, and if the standard is not present, that's a zero. And the next category is multicultural. People of color are represented as central characters in text and illustrations and stereotyping language, oversimplified generalization, and racial slurs are not present. Another category is persons with disabilities. Non-disabled persons and persons with disabilities are shown performing similar work in related fields. Socioeconomic status, one of the standards. Characters are described by their behaviors, beliefs, and values rather than unnecessary socioeconomic descriptors. And lastly, family. Family groups are depicted in multiple ways: single parents, adopted and fostered children, stepparents, same-sex parents, and/or relatives living with the family. Our goal is that we hope all students in our school district, K to twelve, have an opportunity to see themselves as well as learn of others' culture through a variety of these elements as they continue on in their education.
Okay, I'm going to talk about the tool for grades three to five. So as Sharon mentioned, we're looking at the same five elements when we're reviewing books for biases. The difference between K to two and three to five is we have more of a shift on looking at the chapter books we teach. While we do use picture books in the older grades, this is more focused on the chapter books we'll be doing for a small reading group instruction or for read aloud. One of the important elements that we are talking about when looking at the chapter books for grades three to five is that we're looking at individual books and kind of looking at a span of the year. So we're taking a book, seeing what elements it has, and then looking at, okay. So in the beginning of the year, I taught a book that had characters of different socioeconomic status. Looking at throughout the year, do I teach the other categories? Because with the older grades, we don't read as many chapter books as they read picture books. So we really want to make sure that over the course of a year, we're trying to hit those five main elements. But we don't expect them all to be within one book. So that's one of the big shifts between the K to two and three to five tool.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about the review tool for grades six through twelve. I think very similar to what K-two and three-five are doing, that our tool focuses on essential lenses of identity, social justice and privilege, student impact, socioeconomic status, family, sex and genders, multicultural lenses, and disabilities. And I find that as I've used the tool to talk with my teaching team this year, the review literature, it really pushes us to, I think, center our conversations around equity and representation and inclusivity like at the very beginning of our curriculum design process. As our tool was also created under Paula's leadership from a variety of sources that measure these elements in literature like New York University's culturally competent curriculum scorecard and the Washington model as well. And there you can see elements from the Washington model and NYU Steinhardt scorecard. We were informed by both of these models, and under Paula's leadership, we really blended those to create a tool that seemed to work best for our needs and our teachers. And we can see that on the following slide here. And I think as I've used this tool to work through several texts this year and talk about them with my colleagues, I have really appreciated the way that the tool, you know, pushes me to carefully and thoughtfully consider each of these lenses and to identify ways in which we might need to provide additional instruction and context for our students as they experience each text. You can see here that we have columns for our changes needed. If so, what are they? I think that we've been trying to think about, as Sydney mentioned, that how are texts, how are texts situated in our year-long courses? To what extent are we hitting our key elements over the course of the year? We don't expect any one text to represent everyone. But we also want to think about what are the ways in which we need to build curriculum around each text to make sure that all of our students are encountering these key mirrors and windows. And Sarah, I think you're next.
Hi. So in grade six through eight, there are sort of three different ways that students interact with literature. There are the core texts, which means every single student in the class will read that with a lot of scaffolding structure from the teacher. And we pretty much use the tool to ensure that those core texts are free of bias and are, do the representation that we've been talking about throughout the course of this presentation. In addition to those, in any, any given year, you'll read between three to six core texts as a grade. Then there are literature circle units in which the students are differentiated by their readiness and their interest. And I think our goal would be, over the course of time, to use the tool to look at those texts as well. And especially when we're selecting new texts that might be offered as part of those literature circle units. And then the last time that students interact with text for school is with independent outside reading, where they really have a lot more choice. And while we don't use this tool because the students are self-selecting, what we are trying to do is solicit student feedback. And if it's a book that students want to see become part of a literature circle or even adopted as a core text, we've asked students to fill out the model as well, that, the tool, so we can get that kind of feedback from our students. And that's sort of an ongoing process. And we're trying to refining that and tweaking that as we go. And we've been, oops, can we go back? Few slides? I don't know what's happening to the slideshow, but one more. Yeah. Yeah. So in sixth and seventh grade through, this, this work really began a couple of years ago in department meeting time where we were looking to review the texts that we had and looking mostly for who's missing, whose voices just don't seem to appear enough in our core curriculum. And as a result of that, in sixth grade, they adopted the new tech, text, Look Both Ways by Jason Reynolds. And in seventh grade, they adopted Ivy Aberdeen's Letter to the World and knew just this year was Harbor Me. The teachers are going to be teaching that coming up soon. And that was really the the first text that went through this whole process that the seventh grade teachers had opportunity, had some curriculum development time and AP day to sit and use the tool to, to really measure out where it stood and chose to adopt it and ran it by Kristen and Paula and Andrew to sort of get that final stamp of approval. And in addition to this, this book by Jacqueline Woodson, they were able to find a research-based study out of New Jersey that sort of brought three additional lenses for teaching the text. One that looks at it as a mentor text to study author's craft. One that is a critical lens to challenge bias assumptions and stereotypes. And one that is a solution lens that really helps students and teachers understand the text as a guide for action and for change. And then in eighth grade, we have all that the, we started the year with a Windows unit again. So students begin by looking at experiences that are different from their own. And they've created, we have about two hundred and fifty podcasts from students that are available on our library website where they were able to talk about the bias and assumptions that were surfaced in these texts and how they respond to them and what they sort of learned from looking at life through a different perspective. We have our Holocaust unit that we've tried to use this tool to understand what texts are good to adopt for that and not. And then three new books that we came up with that we just had some summer work time and another AP day to take a look at Internment, Children of Blood and Bone in the House and the Cerulean Sea. And I don't know if Kristen or whoever's in charge of the slideshow wants to just quick, quickly click on one of those three links. It doesn't matter which one, but you can see the tool filled out. Should be a link to that. And we don't need to go through it step by step. But there are really three parts to the six-twelve tool here. The first is just a little narrative text. That's kind of a rationale for why are we adopting this text? And this is where, when we were looking at the eighth grade curriculum, we realized we needed, we were missing sort of a Muslim centered voice, and we needed more strong female protagonists and a variety of other BIPOC characters. And this text seemed to fit that need. And so these charts will go through that identity, the socioeconomic status, families, disabilities, multicultural, sex and gender. And then this part of the tool here is filling out the three, two, one for how, with the quality of that standard being present. And what we were noticing some of the times, and this is where it's the, it's sort of the fun part of the teacher's job, is when is the bias intentional? Or when is the racist language intentional? And what do we do about that? And how do we approach, approach that with our students? You know, with this text being that all Muslim people in the US are rounded up and put into internment camps. Obviously, the, when, if the standard is all religions are treated with respect and equality, that could be a low standard, but we're saying that this is intentional. And that's the intent of teaching about that theme. So that's sort of what we're looking at, six through eight. And what we're excited about is in tournament, we're hoping to adopt as part of the eighth grade, we're going to start with a literature circle, see how students respond to it because student feedback is so important. And our library, partnering with the library and summer reading to offer Children of Blood and Bone and House and the Cerulean Sea, again, to get student feedback before we decide what might be a core text and what might be offered in the literature circle. Thank you. I think Kate, maybe you're next.
Yes, I am. Hi, everybody. So I think Sarah did a really good job of showing you how the tool is used and what the thought process is that teachers go through while they're looking at it. And Dora mentioned that as well. We have started using the tool. We had a tool to bring in texts before this, but this fit in beautifully with our, our our process before. Basically, we read books mostly by the whole class and then also in literature, literature circles. Sometimes students do individual reading, and they usually self-select those books through our library with Robin Chaketti. We review the texts that we want to bring in, and then as we bring texts in, we are cycling texts out. So each teaching team is looking at their grade or their course and considering if we bring something in, then what are we going to move out? And it's been a pretty positive process so far. I think one thing we really wanted with this tool was to have it be nimble so that when something comes up in the world or something that we realize we want to explore, it's not a two-year process. It can be a very quick process. And Kristen has really helped us and the lit review committee has been really supportive of that. I, we, we brought two new texts in. If you go to the next slide this year, the best we could do and clap a new land. I just taught clap a new land. So I'll just speak to like the happy ending of the process here. We went, I went through the text with Kristen and Andrew and Paula. We talked about various angles and issues that was, were brought up in the text. The text is written in poetic form. This, the main characters are Dominican, one lives in New York, one lives in the Dominican Republic, and they realized they have the same father and everything that comes with that. I didn't know how the poetry part was going to go for them. So after the first week, I gave them a feedback form and I asked them, how is it going for you? And I was really pleased to see that students themselves brought up how much they like addressing cultural identity and cultural differences in a community. And then the last one, students said, I feel is it's one of those books that really hard to put down to perfect mix of emotion, culture and love. So I agree with that, but I didn't tell them to say that. So it was great that, you know, after the process worked and, you know, my colleague Jenny Blount and I put together the curriculum and we went in there and tried it that it had such a great reception. So I guess I'm here for the example of the end result. It is very positive. Thank you.
Great. Thank, thank you so much.
That's great.
I, I love data. So I love to see data tools like this. This reminds me of the RIG survey. That just gives a really, a great opportunity to, for people, for people who are looking to grow the curriculum, to, to find ways to find the gaps. But also to explain to people who might not understand what those gaps are. It's something tangible that can be pointed to, to, to help lead people along and to help people outside of the school who don't live this stuff every day, better understand all the work that you guys do and why it's meaningful and how work like this really does it, you know, like increasing the representation and all that. It gets you to just a fundamental building block to, to these meaningful education of like a meaningful experience, as you guys mentioned. So this was a, I don't know, it was a really meaningful presentation to me. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I, I just wanted to point out one of the uses of the tool is to, of course, incorporate more literature into our curriculum. So kids have mirrors and windows. But it's also to give teachers who are reviewing the literature, the professional development experience of looking at a whole tool. Because when we approach literature, any individual, you probably have two, three, four lenses, but you don't have 64 lenses looking for anti-bias and multiculturalism, for example. So now it's like those circles of review. Every time a teacher looks at a piece of literature in, as a possible selection. You're incorporating, you're sort of widening your sphere of what you're looking for. So I'm, I'm really glad that you saw that. Thank you.
With this great selection of, of assessments.
Yeah. I mean, the, the foundation that you're creating, right? And as you said, they're nimble, right? These tools. So they give you the ability to not be reactive, but to expand perhaps your repertoire based on something that happens. So I know a lot of work went into sort of being consistent K 12 in the best way possible. So that's, I think, really important. So it's a really, to me, building a foundation like this, you know, you say it's two years and I understand that's a lot of work. So I really appreciate that. And I'm delighted to see these new texts that you all carefully selected. So thank you very much.
Do you have a question?
I just, I also wanted to add, this was one of my favorite, favorite presentations.
Not that we have favorites.
But I have really enjoyed seeing how all the hard work went into really creating some structures and data that will, that connects children to the, to those literacy pieces where they can see themselves. We've seen beautiful science curriculum that speaks to how powerful literacy pieces are and how we remember and how we form those memories as, as we learn. Attending MAS C conference three years ago, I have learned that, you know, when children read about themselves or similar experiences, it makes them read more. So thank you so much for doing this very, very important work because not only it's, it speaks to the mental wellbeing of our students, but also expanding and getting them excited about reading and reading more. So thank you.
So I have been dying for this presentation all year. I've made no secret of that. So as a parent, what I think is so extraordinary is I've started to see this in action with my kids. Noticing the texts that they bring home and they were like, not the same kinds of books that I was reading. And I've been so curious about how we've all gone about this. And I will say, I am truly floored at how thoughtful and thorough this is. I wasn't expecting that level of care and consideration, not, I'm not expecting it of you, but this is extraordinary. And I also think too, I'm really grateful to see it because there's so much that you all as educators do that is so much more than being with the kids in the classroom. And we don't always get to see all that. And this is unbelievably helpful to me too, to really, really remember how much goes into classroom preparation, year-long preparation, curriculum. This is really extraordinary. And then the final thing that I always like to think I was in high school, like five years ago and not 30. The fact that you guys are working with the students and soliciting feedback, I think is something that is, that seems very new and progressive in ways that, you know, no one was asking me what I thought when I was 18. So this is, this is just so wonderful. I'm so grateful for this presentation. Like ever, it's one of my favorites. So I, you know, it was great. Thank you guys so much.
Yeah. And, and I would agree. And also, you know, having kids that I've watched the progression of things and even text change. Definitely at the high school, I've seen some text change, you know, pretty recently, which has been great. And even to the middle school. And I just think it's a real opportunity to work with our kids, especially in six through 12 about what you are looking for in a text. And to go through even some of these tools with, with those kids to really, you know, focus in on that. And, and are you doing any work? Like, can I ask a question? If you're doing any work directly with your students in six through 12 with any of these tools? Or is this more of an educator tool that you're using?
Sarah, you want to answer that? I think you, yeah.
So I think it, we're starting with it with the educators and we had one sort of pared down. Like we turned it into a Google forum and had students fill it out. And for some students, it was really cumbersome. For some, they were able to be really thoughtful about it. So I think to answer that question, we're still in the process of figuring out the best way to use it. But especially with the eighth graders, absolutely, they are able to, because our whole, the whole unit in social studies and English is really about identity injustice and trying to figure out. So it's a way for us to sort of do that double hit of, are you understanding the whole themes of the year? And then be able to apply it to through being a critical thinker about a book. Whether it's a book that we chose for you or a book that you chose for yourself. So yeah, I'm really excited about having the students use it. And I have a number of kids that sort of self-selected to me with me like at lunch and tell me about the books that they've read and they sort of informally use the tool by just answering all the questions without filling out the form. But, um, so there, we're figuring that out, but, but definitely.
I know. Cause I know like my older kids in particular like to, you know, teach me all sorts of things. And so I think you definitely learn a lot from our kids. So thank you very much. It was a great presentation.
Carrie, do you have something before? I've got a quick comment.
Go ahead, Court.
Yeah, thank you. It might've been Kate who said, "The tool pushes me." And I think really what you were getting at was this entire process was, was a push. And so I'm curious if anybody would speak a little bit more to that. How did this not only move the district forward towards some of our objectives, but perhaps move you forward in a way that you hoped for, or even found unexpected and quite positive?
Kate, I think he called on you.
All right, Court. I think what I would say is that we as English teachers are always reading texts and thinking, could I teach this? Could I teach this? Could I teach this? And the house in the Cerulean Sea, I just would been banging on about it. And finally I saw Sarah picked it up and I was like, yes. I think really for us, the question is always, how am I going to bring this into the curriculum? What do I need to do? What is the process? Will other people want to teach it with me? Right? And so what this provided for us was the opportunity to say, yes, we're doing this. Yes, we're bringing in texts. Yes, bring those red books in and let's talk about it. And then we got to use the tool to do that work. And you know, I've been surprised by some texts that, that have sort of stuck with me, but our practice text was a book called Exit West. Which is about displaced people because of war and how hard it is to move from one place to another. When you need to get out of the way of trouble. And just when Ukraine happened, I looked at my colleagues and I said, you know, we've got Exit West right here. And it's already passed the test of the lit review committee. So what do you guys think? And, and so, you know, I've been amazed to see that some texts that I thought, I don't know about this one, actually turned out to be something I think I would like to try. So it's great to have these opportunities and Kristen's been so supportive, especially with money, right? To buy texts is expensive and to trial texts, you know, even if we're going to do a couple of, of classes, that's still 50 texts, you know, if we're going to do two sections, if we really want to do it with two sections and two teachers, it's a hundred texts, you know? So the finances have been wonderful and, and yeah, Court, I have learned a lot and you know, I think Doric would say the same, like the process really makes you think about what are my intentions with this text and what are my students going to see when they read it?
Wondering if maybe Sydney and Sharon Hane, if you guys could respond because you were last summer trying to use the middle grades tool to look at fifth grade texts and think about how that would work for you.
Definitely. Um, I think one part to respond to your question, Court, is that it helps you as a teacher become more reflective. Like I can speak for myself personally, I thought I was doing a great job teaching diverse books because all of the characters were of different races. But that was only one part of diversity. Like I wasn't teaching anything with different family structures, different socioeconomic structures, different abilities. So I think using this tool really made me look at the books that I was teaching and realize, all right, I've got the multicultural part down. But what about all the other places that I'm missing in my curriculum? And how can I include those texts to teach to different areas? And Sharon, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about what we did this summer, but we did use the tool to look at some of the books that we ordered. And it went very well. We use the middle school tool, but now with the adoption of the K to two and three to five tool, I'm excited to look at those and kind of pare it down even more.
Yeah. So Court, just at the younger grade level, grade five, we did, we took a few days this, this past summer. And we took a look at a couple of books, we used the tool. And the beauty of it, as I mentioned before, was the discussion, the reflection, the discussion. And the thing that really came out, and I think Sarah might've alluded to this, is it really brings you to a higher place of critical understanding what you're reading. And I think for our students, that's just a bonus because that's where we always want to go with kids, even kids with picture books. How can we have them go beyond and go to critical levels of understanding? What was the meaning of that image? What was the author trying to say with that? And just like with the chapter books at grade five, we had some wonderful discussions, questioning. And that helped us plan for our units. We, while we met, we also planned for the unit that the teachers were going to use this past year. And that really fostered a lot of good activities and kinds of questions that we wanted our students to have with this. So I think there were dual, not only did we look at books that we thought would be culturally relevant free of this bias, but also would really promote those standards that we took a look at at any grade level. And I think this will do it. And the beauty is the discussion among colleagues. I think that is a gift in itself.
Good. Thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you. This is such a wonderful presentation. I, I love, I've heard Kristen talk about this notion of mirrors and windows before, and I think it's such a powerful visual, just something that you can really grasp. And I, I, I think it's such a great way to think about books and literature and all sorts of how we think about our lives and how we learn. And I, I was completely blown away by the, I was not anticipating this. All like a multi-page analysis of books and literature and so much thought goes into that. So thank you. I'm, I just, I, I'm really impressed. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So I was having a conversation today with somebody about critical thinking and about just how essential it is right now. And, and he made an interesting analogy about if you have two people standing side by side and one says the sun rises in the east and the other says the sun rises in the west. There's no critical conversation you can have there. But if you have two people who say, I think the sunrise is the most beautiful thing. And the other one says, I think sunset is the most beautiful thing. You can have a critical conversation. And, and I think that this whole presentation has shown us just the importance of shifting the dialogue back to, you know, is it, is the sunrise or is the sunset more beautiful? So thank you.
Seems like we're winding down. I just want to thank everybody you see on your screen. Fantastic work, hard, really hard work, taking a look at ourselves and being analytical. So thank you to all of you for bringing your best thinking and speaking tonight and also our other 10 colleagues who aren't on the Zoom tonight. So thank you. It's been a pleasure. And now you can go home.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Great. So now we will shift gears to policy, Metco representation on school committee. And so I think I'll hand that over to our policy chair.
So Eva and Tracy and I want to share with you work.
Oh, that's right. No, I'm sorry. I was going to open up some more public comments. That's right. Oh, okay. So if we have members of the public who would like to share any comments at this time about the policy, Metco representation, please raise your hand before we have our discussion. Yes, Wendy Gillings.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Um, I have a quick question regarding the, and I know you'll get into more discussion concerning the Metco representation at the committee level. But my question is regarding the closed session. And so I understand that we, when I say we, meaning, you know, Boston Metco representatives would not be able to have voting rights anyway. And I guess the question is, if that's the case, what, I guess I'm trying to figure out what the justification is. And not being able to attend the closed sessions more for informational purposes. I mean, we wouldn't be able to vote, but it would just seem like it would be helpful if we actually could be a part of that. So we could hear about some of what's being discussed.
They will probably discuss things in the meeting.
I think the question, yeah, we'll, we'll certainly try to incorporate that in our own conversation to the extent we can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Simply because we don't do a dialogue here. Thank you. Anybody else?
Any other? Okay.
So I'm going to.
Oh, yes. Hi. Please state your name and address and.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Frank. She'll be free on Street Conference. Yeah. And just speaking of how this is a dialogue, I was just curious to what extent you're thinking about consulting with the Metco Concord families and the parents to really get their substantive feedback, given that it can't really happen in this setting. But just really prioritize those voices since they're the ones that we're actually hoping to elevate through this policy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
If you, I want to.
Try it again. Twice as fast though. Um, I was asking if, um, what your plans were for consulting the Metco families about this policy um, in substantive ways, given that that isn't possible in this setting. This isn't meant to be a dialogue. Um, but really that those are the voices that were, that hopefully this plan is hoping and its policy is hoping to elevate. And so just really getting their substantive feedback on the policy.
Thank you very much.
Okay. There are other public comments? No. Thank you, Mr. Booth.
So I will, uh, ask that, uh, Tracy Morano and Eva Mustafi, as well as, uh, Dr. Lori Hunter, help me give you a recap here. I'll do my best to get us started. First, uh, any and every, uh, element of the various recommendations and suggestions that have come our way are, uh, under active consideration. We have not, uh, discounted or put away any of those, uh, recommendations. Um, and we are intending to move forward. Number one, uh, quickly because it deserves attention. It's important and, uh, the parent community wants us to move on this. Alternatively, we want to move slow enough so that we do exactly what Elizabeth suggested, and that is make certain that, uh, we have active parent participation in a number of ways. And we'll try to speak to, uh, what, uh, what those might be. We have on the screen, a draft that was, uh, put together for discussion purposes only. This is not a proposal at this time. There is no, uh, action that the policy committee is bringing to you that requires your action. Instead, what we want is a conversation to more fully understand the school committee's posture, uh, on this, uh, attempt to put together a policy whereby the, uh, Metco community would have a parent representative, uh, in some fashion on the school committee. I'll ask Tracy to speak to the draft that she put together and, uh, the sources that she used. I want to thank her for that, that work. Eva joins me on that. I know we're grateful to her. There are only three communities now in Commonwealth of Massachusetts that are Metco communities that have such a policy. We would be number four. Uh, we have, uh, some that go back decades and some that go back only about a year or so, if I'm correct, Tracy. We, uh, believe at present that this would be a, uh, member who would be a full participant in virtually every respect except one critical one. And we acknowledge it's a critical one. And one that we don't see a way to, uh, surmount or overcome at this point, and that is this is not a person who would have voting rights because that is something that comes under charter. It comes under mass general law and it comes under the, uh, two-town agreement by which we have a regional, uh, school district for the, uh, grades nine through 12. And, um, beyond that, um, we are hoping, this is not a formal recommendation. We're hoping that, uh, we would, uh, have things, uh, in place and, and functioning come, uh, September of next year. Uh, excuse me, of this year, forgive me. Um, so that's a short timeline to put together a policy and then all the accompanying pieces that happen on the operational side to align with policy. And, uh, there is, uh, uh, some thought about, uh, hybrid attendance, uh, or remote attendance, uh, being, uh, uh, available or accessible to the Metco parent representative. And, uh, you'll, you'll hear Tracy speak, uh, to, uh, the term. Would this be a one-year, two-year? That's something we want your advice and counsel on. What would be the parent body or mechanism? We have been in contact with several groups, including the Metco Parents Collective. Uh, we have a, uh, Parents Council, Metco Parents Council, that is not active at the present time. Uh, but we do have a Superintendent's Advisory Council. So there needs to be a mechanism by which every, uh, Metco parent is a participant. Every parent of the school district is part of a Metco district. But for purposes of this representation, it would be restricted only to parents, uh, of students in the Metco program at, uh, at the present time. And, uh, as to whether, uh, there would be any, uh, financial support to, uh, uh, offset some of the significant out-of-pocket costs for volunteers. That is, uh, a discussion that probably will take place, uh, within whatever body it is that's recognized as the, uh, body representing all Metco parents for purposes of bringing forth representatives. So that would be happening, uh, at a different time and, uh, different place. I hope that's enough of an opener. And I think I can, Tracy, perhaps turn it to you to take us through what I hope is a nice starting place to, uh, get sentiments, again, sentiments from, uh, the school committee. But finally, before I, I yield, uh, what do we know so far about, uh, the means by which we can have a robust, uh, communication with the, uh, Metco parents and all the parents, uh, in the district? And we hope to open up more public comment opportunities within our policy meetings going forward for the short term for this. The superintendent, uh, within a week, she can speak to this, has a meeting of her advisory committee. And there would be an opportunity for give and take there, that there isn't in these formal business meetings, given open meeting law. And, uh, we also have a, uh, forum coming up, uh, at, uh, Metco Inc., is it?
The Crock Center in Boston.
Center. So we, so we're going to use, uh, other opportunities that we have where, uh, Metco parents are coming together and, uh, meeting with either school committee or school leadership or both. So that, uh, in a less constrained way, this conversation can continue. And we want it to continue until, uh, all interested parties are confident that, uh, they have weighed in, weighed in fully. And, uh, we want to reach a point where the policy subcommittee is confident that we can bring something to you that's a definitive recommendation that will then, uh, be policy that can be successfully implemented on the operational side, which is something we don't do, uh, but it has to align. Tracy, if you would.
Sure. So, um, this morning I spoke with the two former, uh, Weston representatives on their school committee. And those of you who joined me for policy heard this before. I don't think you read policy. Um, and for members of the audience, just, I'll just give some background. So I took, spoke with two former, and we did a Zoom, two former representatives and then their current, um, school committee representative. Weston, Lincoln, Bedford, and we would be the fourth district. So Bedford, um, just, just put a representative on. I think I want to say like January because my conversation started back with them with January. And theirs is a one-year pilot program, but a two-year term. And all it's saying is just in their policy, they've outlined that they're going to reevaluate their policy after the first year, which we would do anyway. And we had a little bit of that discussion and policy. Um, we had a really great conversation and these women were just, they were a wealth of knowledge. Um, they've been involved in the Weston Metco program for probably 10 to 20 years. One of the women had started, she started PTOs within Metco communities. And I think she said, she's like, out of the 30 Metco communities, I get them all up and running. So she's really, um, active and is on the board of Metco Inc. right now. And all of the women, I did ask if we could just continue to meet and collaborate. And I would love to work with Bedford, Lincoln, Weston, and then put Concord in there and really figure out what's going to work for us. We talked about the non-voting member and it is that, it, that is the case in all the districts. We talked about executive session, closed meetings today. And the representatives from Weston do not attend any of the closed meetings. In their policy, their policy isn't, they, it says there's an election, but they said in practice, it's really not an election. They, someone kind of self-selects themselves that can make the time commitment to come to the meeting. So they have one representative that is the primary, and then they have an alternative representative that would sit in the audience. You know, like we have members here in the audience. And if their primary person can't come to a meeting, then the alternate would come to the table. So there's always a representative at the table. And I think that was kind of the highlights of the policy. So then I went into the Weston policy and I, I kind of altered it a little bit because I, I think that we did agree that theirs was the one that we liked the most because of the election process. And I felt strongly that we needed to name that it was a Boston resident Metco family and not, um, a Concord resident. So I, I think that that's important to have. And I just put a two-year term in and most of the women that I, well, the three women I talked to today, one is in her third year. And two of the other women had done it for 10 to 12 years. So definitely, you know, if we, I would love the person to just keep going and going and going, but I don't want to scare anyone off either by saying you must stay here for X amount of time. So I think that it's important to really just, um, work with our Boston families and, you know, with other communities to really see what's working. So we can really, you know, get going on this and make it the most effective use for everyone. So, but certainly with lots of feedback. That was the one important thing. They all felt like, they said, you know, it's important for us to be at those meetings. And the one thing that I think that we should really think about, we have not had a meeting in Boston as a school committee, in COVID. And, and that was the one thing they were like, it's really important to have those Boston meetings and, you know, figure out the best location to have the meetings. Because sometimes parking's an issue. So schools sometimes work out better than other places. So they gave me a whole list of places that have been really great for them. So. Great. That's it.
Eva, anything to add? And then I want to turn to Lori and then we'll open it up for questions. If that's all right with the chairs.
Yes. So I just wanted to add a couple of things. Um, uh, we definitely have been, uh, listen, uh, throughout policy meetings, we've opened up to the public comment and we've definitely been listening to, um, the feedback that is coming back from community to better understand what are the needs, um, uh, even drafting this rough draft to bring in front of you. So, um, we've talked about the Zoom, um, as a hybrid option. We've talked about, uh, the student representative, um, and really listened to the, to the feedback that is important.
I think the only thing I'd add is we're working on a student representative to join Darcy and, um, Mary. So that I think is going to be in place up to one of the factions of student government, even after the break. So we're trying to accelerate that. And I'll make sure that voice is present along with a whole lot of other things we're working on from my side. And this is your role. And it's nice to see them all complement each other.
Uh, one side note, we really need to spin up that student advisory council in a formal way and FY23, right? The, the MGL law that says we have an actual student advisory.
So Dorothy was at our, Dorothy Presser from MASC was at our last policy subcommittee meeting. And she said, actually, the two student reps are technically making you compliant with the law.
Right. But I, I think I would like to formal.
So you certainly can. You don't have to.
Times a year, I maybe have a bigger dialogue, right? Um, especially if we're going to invite, um, perhaps more students, right, um, at the table.
So what I, what I hear you saying is we could be challenged, uh, and we could probably pass muster. But if we came closer to the line and MGL, which is what, five students, five times a year?
Something like that, yeah.
Us going to them and this is what it implies.
Right. Right. Yeah.
More work for everybody, but if it brings forth more, more dialogue, um, that's perhaps something for next year's goals, as you said.
So I just have some process questions. How is this, this document going to be used? Because it's not been voted by, by any school, anybody.
No, no, this document is only to prompt conversation tonight. That's all.
Okay.
Just so.
So will it be used at the meeting on Thursday?
Not, um.
I just want to be clear.
That's a very good question. We hadn't even entertained that.
I wasn't planning on that. It's a good question. I was going to just talk process and input on what was important from.
That's good because I just wanted to go through the normal process.
Yes, thank you. Good point.
And, and Dorothy has reviewed the draft, um, and made her comments on the draft already. So I think we talked about today, just bringing this back to policy and having a night policy meeting sometime soon. And then we just go through, I, I haven't been on policy, but we've put a new policy in yet. So with guidance from Dorothy, is that just our normal process? We bring it into the meeting and the policy committee votes on it and then brings it here?
Yeah, that is correct. We bring it here for a first reading and then we bring it back for a second reading and adoption. And that's as fast as we can move. So it is a deliberately a slower process. So there are a lot of eyes on anything that's important as policy is.
So, so back to, sorry. So, but, so how do we get feedback from, uh, the, the community? We're going to, we can't really have a conversation.
Here, here is, I believe, the way forward as we know it now.
Right.
And let's get the collective wisdom of this group on this. Number one, um, we have, uh, Dr. Hunter, uh, convening a forum. This is going to be one of the agenda items. Number two, she's convening the Superintendent's Advisory Committee. That's going to be a forum.
You're going to appoint people to that before the meeting's over. So you'll have representation.
And, uh, third, my suggestion that we didn't have time to really hash out today was that we, uh, have the policy subcommittee meet on an evening as soon as possible. Notwithstanding the busy time of year with town meetings and this and that, but move it up, uh, to an evening meeting and build into that agenda, uh, not one, but perhaps three different, uh, points during the meeting for public comment. So people can follow the course of our deliberations and then periodically punctuate it, uh, if you will, with, with their opinions or suggestions or concerns.
Yeah.
To get us more fully informed, but still stay on the right side of the old meeting law.
Right.
And then in addition to that, uh, we, uh, are always eager to do what we've done already, which is receive, uh, comments from the, the larger community, whether it's students, parents, Metco parents.
Great.
And, and so we hope people have eyes on this process so that, uh, nobody, uh, tells us next September that this was a surprise to them.
Right. So it's early, it's, you know, these agendas go up as early as possible, right? A link to something that they can comment on and not just have it appear like the day of or something like that.
Lead time matters.
Yes.
Agreed.
Okay.
And I've been sending a Friday update to the Metco community. So I can, I've been highlighting things that are coming up so they know where to find it. I've also included the links to the recordings of the previous policy meetings and I can certainly do that with tonight's.
And we need to make the whole community aware of them.
Yes, which I think is the goal of tonight. Tonight, I mean, we didn't, we deliberately didn't expect a first reading and expect any recommendations at this time. It was just to, um, bring everybody in be, because of the amount of, of input and the, the, you know, the, the desire to hear from so many people. We just wanted to highlight it to the community that, that these are the, this is the process.
Tracy did note that Bedford has somewhere in their language that their initial effort is a quote pilot effort, unquote. Uh, we concluded that, uh, policy is our sole domain that we are solely responsible for. And, uh, we don't need to frame anything as a pilot in order to revisit it. And this should be revisited if necessary because it's going to be under, uh, we hope, uh, really careful scrutiny.
That's medicine.
Um, one of the things in the document, um, or so Tracy was talking about having conversations with other, other towns. And I think she talked about having a rotating or alternate person. But that's not in our current draft. Is that, can you just talk about how, where you all landed on that notion of having one primary person with an alternate?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I, I'm going to say we didn't land anywhere. Uh, any opinion we have that's, uh, shared is a, a temporary one, subject to your influence tonight. So, but, but, but nonetheless, um, it's a good question. Uh, and I think I would be accurate in saying we are leaning toward some mechanism whereby a primary has an alternate, uh, so that there is continuity, so that there, uh, is, uh, another, uh, Metco, uh, voice and perspective, um, not limited to, to one. Uh, but for efficiency, uh, our thinking so far, uh, thus far, again, I qualify it that way, is that there would be, uh, one primary, uh, designee recognized as the representative to this, to serve on the school committee in this capacity.
And if I can just add that, um, that, so if you pull up the Weston policy and this draft and take a look at both of them, they call it, um, and, and so again, in practice is not what's actually, in their policy is not what's happening. So they call. So they call it a representative or co-representatives, and that's the language they use, which that's something that we can certainly consider. And I I we just have not, as the policy committee, we're moving very quickly with this. Intentionally quickly. So these are just some things we have to hash out. And then the other thing I just would direct you to is if there is a vacancy, we tried to handle that. They don't have that language in their policy. But I put language in there. So should there become a vacancy within the term? You know, and this is again, just my suggestion. And, you know, unless we had a formalized Metco parent organization that we could use, my suggestion was just to go to the superintendent's advisory council, which is a group of Metco parents and have them appoint someone for the rest of the term and then have an election. Or, you know, if it was at the beginning of a term, then the election could happen, but we just don't want to leave that seat open. So we always want there to be representation. So that that language at the bottom provides for that. So I would just, and any feedback you have, like if anyone on the committee has any feedback, you could just send it directly to me. So we don't.
Let's provide it to the chair. It's consistent, right? I mean, I think, just, I want to tell the public, right?
Oh.
If you have feedback to to provide it to, right?
Because Court's the chair.
Yeah, to chair. Yes, not me, chair, that's.
No.
And the the problem is, is what's a good way to contact you, Court? Because your email address is not on the website where we need to do something.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to share it.
I suggest just using the portal that you have on the webpage. Then you'll all see the feedback and Court will be the one to collate it.
That sounds good. Yeah, that works.
Add that to our comms conversation.
Yes. Good.
Okay.
I will, uh, uh, going forward, I will be advocating for a superintendent's advisory committee role in keeping the representation constant should there be any interruption. And I am in favor of a a Metco parent group that is governed by Metco parents, similar to our own PTGs. As another mechanism that this invites the Metco community to to rebuild. That's the recommendation I'll be bringing to my column on policy.
Good. So is that everything you need from us tonight?
Well, you tell us.
And just, we do have, but I I just want the public to realize, we do have Metco family friends at Alcott that's in existence right now. And it's run under the umbrella of PTG. It's just that we aren't, so the Weston, the way that they're doing it is it's the Boston Weston Metco Parents Organization. So we don't have that formal umbrella, but Weston is K to 12. We are two districts. So we do have family friends at K to five and at the middle school. And at the high school, it just becomes a little bit more loose because I do think that high school kids don't want their parents around or participating in anything. And so it's just a little bit different at the high school. So I think there's, it's just not as formalized, I would say. At least that's been my experience, but.
All right.
Great.
All right. We will keep you informed.
Okay, thank you. We shift.
It's time, yep, for the regional capital article for the Carlisle Town Committee. So I think that.
So, yeah, Jared is queued up. We took the slides that you have seen already for the public hearing, et cetera. Put them on the Carlisle format as required and took a couple of suggestions Sarah passed along from the Carlisle discussions. So Jared can, we didn't think we'd go slide by slide, but he can give you a quick view of where we're at.
So who, just as a, from procedural, because you guys have never presented a capital, Carlisle doesn't. Doesn't invite for for the for the budget. So, um, so who will be presenting is?
I think that's for tonight's discussion. I presented Concord all the town meeting articles. I've never presented in Carlisle. Because it's the budget's embedded in the finance committee presentation. So I think it's for you to talk on.
Who was supposed to remember back in 2019 or so long ago?
I think I was going to do it. Yeah, I think I was.
Great. Can you all see that?
Yeah.
This yellow that we're, we're mixed about, but they, I think it's the contrast that they like.
Great. So you've all seen these before, so I'll just go over them on a high level. This article is for the borrowing, for the repaving and the lining of the access road. Uh, here's a quote from the Concord Town Engineer who rated this poor. The total cost of the project is $1,053,665. The school committee voted to offset this by $200,000. Therefore, the borrowing cost will be $853,665. Lighting for the access road includes the following, and we estimate the lighting cost to be $223,100. The access road estimated cost at $830,565. And includes the catch basins and drainage, the manholes, four of them who need to be replaced regardless if this passes or not. Then the piping, curb removal, granite edging, cement and asphalt. Here are some pictures from 19. At this time, you can see the roads in the difference were broken and fault. The utility covers have sunken. The entire length of the access road already had alligator cracks, patches and potholes, sidewalks and curbing have cracked. And in need of replacement. And we've already done multiple patches and repairs. And this was identified as a safety issue issue with limited ADA accessibility. Again, more pictures from 19 from patching and significant cracking. Fast forward to 2022, inner access roads have, as you can see, have gotten significantly worse, worse there. They're beyond repair. Here's some pictures of the thorough street entrance. This is in poor condition with cracks and patches throughout the extent of the apron. Most of the curbs actually look like this. It's significant safety issue. And unfortunately, this is what happens with the asphalt berms. Here's in front of the BB center. Again, you can see sections have been replaced. Also, the speed bumps here is a is an issue. More pictures. This is the Walden Street entrance. I feel like this is a new slide that we did not present last time, but based on NESDEX latest enrollment projection report. I am stressing, you know, it is a projection and is subject to change, but we use these numbers. Here are the estimated debt payments with borrowing starting in FY24. And we used about a four percent increase, a conservative four percent interest rate. In the report, the 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 cost projection that we got, the estimate includes six percent inflation from the previous estimate, fifteen percent contingency. And seven and a half percent soft costs, which includes a CPW, I think it's a CPW pavement management design and material testing. And then here's the Concord timeline. Town meeting for Concord is on May 1st and the September primary ballot is September 6th. So the project would have to start if approved after the ballot. But we're already working on getting some updated cost estimates and working with the town on that. And again, the total cost is $853,665. That is the borrowing costs.
And that is that presentation.
So part of the timing of this is Carlisle Town Meeting is the 25th, so you don't meet again. Somehow that came around quickly. So you don't meet again. So we wanted to bring this to you to to see and firm up logistics and any other feedback.
I have one question. I was looking through the 2019 presentation and there, there was a lot of talk about like the tensile strength of the access roads falling. There may be substandard base material. There was a lot of language about new gravel, subbase compaction, and it was more framed as rather than a repaving, it was a reconstruct. The, is it, is it the same work that we're doing? It's just different language.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And and they could have been including some of that language due to the the parking as well. Maybe some, some had to do with that.
True.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it said like reconstruct the access road. The tensile strength of the access roads failing and there may be substandard base material reconstruction. And just for the access road reconstruction slide, it was something about reconstruction includes new gravel, subbase compaction. It was just a lot of good.
Lot of detail.
Lot of good detail, I think, that that explained it more that we're just not laying down like another layer of.
If you look at that cost breakdown, you'll probably see a lot of this.
You see them, you just see them. But but, I mean, the way it was in 19, I think, gives a good makes, it tells a story that 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 may have disappeared from, yeah. And then just a little thing, the technical, the Carlisle timeline, I think we need a slide for just to point out that there's going to, there's also a vote in.
I think both would be effective, right?
Right. Yes. Yeah. Yes.
The votes for both towns.
I think that we were thinking Carlisle would know its timeline because we were in Carlisle.
We do have to, we have to point out the vote part of it, even though it comes after, just to to drum it home that people may not be planning to go to vote for, you know, and but maybe they drive their kid to school or have a kid who's lost a tire on the access road and have a more compelling reason to get to the ballots, right?
And we just need to fix the article number.
And the article, yeah, yeah, and we have to align the article numbers. Well, that was, it was, I think it is 19 this year. Yes.
Mosquito.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's, oh, oh, and the other thing that's that was in the other presentation was a overview, the photo, the picture of just the map. But because a lot of people aren't going to know what we mean by the access road, I think. I mean, it's, it's, it's not when you think of access road, you think of a little offshoot. Instead, it is the access, right, right, right?
Like literal.
This is the way to access the high school. So so I think calling attention to that was was very effective in the 2019 presentation.
Yeah.
A couple of questions here. One, I'm guessing that the brand new NESDEX projections, which I haven't seen before, get quite sketchy after five years out. Because there are no birth rates to look at to apply. So I would hope we don't overinterpret those numbers yet. Secondly, I see debt assessment with a total of something in excess of a million dollars. And it doesn't include the $200,000 that we brought in from the the stabilization account, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
So that that means we got borrowing costs, something in excess of 200,000 for the 11-year period you're recommending.
Just using a conservative four percent interest rate is probably lower than that, but that's what we used.
Okay. And then on a very different topic, remind us, if you can, anybody. How does this project align with our bicycle transportation objectives for for students in the town? Is that going to be a part of our thinking?
Yes, we've definitely heard that feedback. We'll talk with the, I think the town, since they did the engineering work, right, Jared? See, see what the options are. We can't eliminate the parking along the road, so we gotta look at the width of the road. No, just that we definitely know. That's a, an ask for sure.
Good. Thank you. And then finally, the the word buffer on the finance page suggests that some of that money might might well get pulled back. Is that a reasonable hope?
It is a reasonable hope. So we would, again, we would only borrow what we need and the rest would go back. So if we don't need all 853, we won't use it. And that would, that would offset future assessments.
And because this is the first time, some people might be hearing this, I think it bears repeating. We're trying to incorporate this work into other larger town works in the town of Concord. So we get some some efficiencies and cost savings. So the, so the timing is important in that respect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I just have a couple of more things. If we are able to do work in FY23, would we start borrowing in FY23?
No, and I'll let Ian speak a little bit more on that. I think it makes sense to start the borrowing in FY24.
I can add to that. So we may do, depending on the timing and when we actually need to pay vendors, and it's going to be happening over the summer. So as the fiscal year split there. We may end up borrowing in FY23, but the first payments wouldn't be due until FY24. We wouldn't have to pay those borrowings until FY24.
And we can start the work before the Concord vote?
No. No, summer of 23.
Yeah.
But that could be June.
I see. So the vendors will get paid, but the bar, the debt.
Not yet. And I didn't, I might have missed it. Was there any mention of ADA compliance?
I did mention that on one of the slides.
Okay.
Yeah, but we, that was something I think that got highlighted back in the 2019 one, but that would resonate with the voters.
I think so.
Yeah, yeah. Because I think there was more talk about like the, you know, just explain why it's not, it's that sidewalk that is if you take an elderly parent on there to see a game or to go to the visit, it's treacherous. It is, it's not a pleasant experience.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yeah, any questions?
No.
No, thank you.
We're also sort of cleaning this up for Concord.
I do have one more. When does it get presented and who's doing it?
Oh, in Carlisle.
April 25th is town meeting. And that's what we were just talking about is if.
Yeah, that's pretty good to say.
If Lori wants to come and present.
I'm willing.
Would it not be appropriate for you and Dr. Hunter? Just thinking out loud.
Yeah, that we could do that. I've never presented a town meeting before, so I definitely wouldn't want to go it alone.
It's pretty, yeah, I think you shouldn't do a team. Okay. You guys can figure it out. Okay, yeah. That's a Monday.
That's a Monday. Yeah, we do it different than, yeah.
Monday.
On Monday, or maybe Tuesday.
I'll come sit in the visitor section.
No, it's not so much, we don't have.
All right.
I apologize for being so liberal with your time.
She's a citizen, of course she's a citizen. All right.
Great.
Anything else?
That's, I think, I think that's it on that one. Full school committee coffees. So it's like a combo effect, I think.
I've put together a tentative schedule with a couple of TBDs. We were invited by the CMS PTG. That was an easy yes for us. We had scheduled ferns for the 12th. That is in the AM. And then in advance of town meeting, I am suggesting four additional coffees. The Fowler branch does have their meeting room available for in-person. It's very sizable. I've checked the times. I'm proposing Thursday, the 14th. We can get in there at lunchtime. We did do a lot of lunchtime CMS building coffees that were surprisingly well attended. You know, people have some flexibility in that hour. The 16th. My question to you is, can we get in CCHS for a Saturday meeting? Or is that complicated with custodial?
No, we have coverage on Saturday.
Okay.
I think there's coverage Saturday morning.
Great. Quite busy.
Um, yeah. It was, it's break technically. It was, it's break, technically break too, and I know there's plenty of activity up there. But I was thinking the Saturday, the sixteenth could be a good one at CCHS. I'm trying to get, you know, these are sort of Concord, Carlisle prioritize, or, you know, the next four are sort of Concord prioritized. So I'm bouncing between Concord and West Concord here.
Um, you do like morning, right? What? You would do a morning.
Yeah, at the CCHS, a Saturday morning, I think that would make sense, especially since there's flexibility. Fowler is less flexible. Um, sometime the week after break, doing an evening. Again, I'm wondering Lori, if that could make sense for a CCHS, throw in a somewhere. Okay. And then finally, again, with the CMS building, I'm sort of following some things that we learned that were surprising. I'm proposing to do one, um, and again, mostly because it's available, um, on Friday, the twenty-ninth, it seems last minute. But I was really continually surprised at how late sometimes people tune into things. Um, I know it's like a little bit close to town meeting, but I do think there could be some good opportunity for people who have last minute questions and such, especially, um, budget. Um, and again, that would be at Fowler, just because there's availability. I haven't booked any of these things. The availability was as of this morning. And then after town meeting concludes, um, especially now that Tracy has gotten some really new and promising ideas about places to, that have been successful with Mecca meetings in the city, um, going into Boston in May, once we wrap up the Concord tour, which just has a little bit more urgency to it. Um, and you and I, you can figure out the location and figure out a date.
So in the past, we're very careful to rotate school committee members amongst the coffees.
Did you make a Google Doc?
We just haven't put in the dates.
Yeah, and it, and at first I didn't know if we were going to try and do one at each building site.
We usually try to do something at Alcott because it's a great location.
Yeah.
Um, it's a little more intimate and maybe, you know, going to the high school sometimes is a little like.
Yeah.
We can swap out CCHS for Alcott too.
Yep.
Um, you know, that, they weren't things I was married to. I was just thinking of ease of booking and all that.
And I think what, what's helpful at Alcott, if you could be outside, they have a great structure, but then they have the playground, so people could actually bring their kids even.
Right.
If it was on a Saturday and their kids can play in the playground at the same time.
Yeah, we can easily swap that out.
Maybe we could do that.
I don't think of Alcott, poor Alcott. I've been to all the elementary schools, going to the high school.
Forget about that. I know.
But that's a better section. Want to swap out CCHS for Alcott?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
That's easy.
This really. I have just a process question.
Yeah.
On, um, so I know Cora, when we were texting about the one on Friday, Court mentioned the quorum. Are we not allowed to have a quorum at these meetings? So it just has to be two Concord and, and one Carlisle if, that's the max?
A third, fourth, or fifth, or sixth, or seventh person can attend. I say an attendee, but they can't speak essentially. He said they're watched.
And we make it easy by having that third person sit aside, sit away.
Okay, okay. So we would just designate who are the people who are like the key people at the meeting?
That's.
For the speakers. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And did you circulate the spreadsheet yet?
I did. I, I put it in the email. No, there's nothing in there. There's nothing in there.
Couple, a couple of thoughts, if, if I might. Number one, I'm a little, I love the idea and I'll help in any way I can. Um, number two, I think it's, uh, good to have a flurry of these because we are coming out of COVID, so we're back. We're back. People are back, so to speak. Uh, and we are, uh, moving toward town meetings. So there is a reason for this sudden flurry of them. Um, lest however, it looks just reactive. Um, uh, and I would hope that maybe longer term, we do something like, uh, a, a regular schedule.
Monthly.
You know, every, every third Tuesday in the evening, I'm making this up, you know, and every, uh, every first Saturday in the morning or something, I don't care, because in this, in this district, it takes a while for something to sort of land on a cultural landscape where people just remember and they anchor it. Um, and if they miss this one, they catch the next one. It becomes a regular feature rather than a reactive kind of thing. Um, so I would, I would hope that that's where we go from here.
That's great.
And then finally, I, I am worried that, uh, if you were talking about April, I heard three dates next week. And I just think it's twelve fourteen and something, anyway.
You're right.
Three next week. And I, and so I just think we can only do so much outreach. And then after you do all the outreach you can do, the only other beneficiary, you, the only other way to, to accelerate, uh, or expand your outreach is with more time on the street for it to penetrate. Um, so I think it's very difficult to pull off something, uh, in a week's time in this town.
Yeah.
Um, but it's town meeting, we have to do it.
Right, and I do think it gives people options. So some people might want to come in the morning, some might have time at lunch. If they're working from home, they can just pop over at lunch. Some can come the evening. And I do think that there's, I mean, this has been past practice, I, because I, I've been to coffees where school committee comes out right before town meeting. So it's, I think some it's expected and maybe in the past two years, it hasn't been expected just because we don't even know when town meeting is. Now we, we know what it is. You know, I mean, town meeting's been in June, it's been in September, and now we're finally getting back to our almost regular schedule, not quite. Um, so, so I think it's in that sense, it's just offering it to people that want to learn about town meeting, school committee, or what's on your mind. And, you know, and I did, I enjoyed our coffees that we had in the fall and it was, you know, it was great to sit in the library steps and, and even if there are three people there, five people, it doesn't matter because for those people, it really makes a difference. Um, and you know, it's similar, you know, when, when one of the women that I spoke with today said, I have access to the superintendent. You know, I mean, I think people do want access to the school committee in a venue where we can dialogue a little bit.
And, and we want access to the people. We want to hear from, from people.
Absolutely.
Because that's the only way that we can, can learn. Yeah, I think part of our goals, Court, should, in the fall or the summer, when we set them, we have to remember to establish the regular coffees. We obviously, we took time off in the winter because we had made a commitment in the fall to do them outside, which made them weather dependent and, um, and, you know, we shut them off in November.
We got, we got really excited. We had one planned inside the Gleason Library in Carlisle. And then, and I think that we probably had that conversation, what, the first week of December or something? It couldn't happen. January fifteenth would be a great time.
And, and, you know, so we sort of, we had decided just to sort of take the winter off and resurrect them in the spring. Um, but yeah, I mean, to have these be regular, I think would be spectacular.
And.
And then, you know, if you had that baseline, we could always add stuff.
Exactly.
Stuff timely topical. I would, if others will indulge me, I'd like to hear from the chairs for just a minute or two on, um, how we manage the discourse without speaking for the school committee. Because we don't want these to be one-way listening sessions. On the other hand, we don't want to overstep our, our, uh, responsibility.
Right, I think we are able to answer factual questions, right? If they're a factual question, so bring your budget book or what have you.
Okay.
Uh, but to answer perhaps, uh, on the ongoing gap between the finance committee, can't do that. We could say what we've said in open session, but beyond that, we really shouldn't comment any further. Um.
So open questions, uh, are declared open questions where we're not going to weigh in.
Right. I mean, I think we all know.
Well, good.
Yeah.
I like your reminder.
But you're gonna, you know, inevitably you might get a curve ball or two, which is good. Um, you know, that's.
But if two people are there, then it's easier to handle a curve ball, right?
Oh, yeah, no. Yes, absolutely. Um, yeah, I said, so I think two people should be there. It shows, first of all, that we're committed to it.
Definitely.
But that's why we want to be sure that if we commit to a coffee and then we only have one person, um, we'll have to figure something out. So.
To that end, we have no takers yet for the twelve.
With the twelve ferns, we have to have the ferns one.
Yeah, I can do the ferns.
I'm gonna just put your name right in there.
And that's what time.
So that is, uh, April twelve, because you set that up.
Nine, nine AM.
Yeah, it is nine, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll come in as a listener.
Because.
You're the listener.
Drop off at eight fifty.
Okay.
Well, I won't speak because we would be having a quorum.
No, we wouldn't. No, you wouldn't.
You wouldn't for two of you. You're running, you should speak.
Committee together, we are not.
Okay.
Yeah, that's no way.
Yes, the two of us. I was.
You get out there.
Not over speaking.
I'm happy to sit back and prove that Concord folks.
The coffee is really good.
I'm concerned.
You probably have a coffee here, but.
Cory, am I putting you on for the twelve for birds? Sure.
Okay.
But as a, as a backup room or backup, whatever you want.
Well, just to move us along, we could do this offline, right?
Good.
Do a lot of this offline. I think that if we get any curveballs, we can write down a question. You can always say like, we look forward to, 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 you know, conferring with the, whoever's the representative, like if it's a policy question, if it's a DEI question, if it's a general chair question, like.
Or it could be a question for administration.
Or administration and get back.
And direct to people. I just, I really liked, uh, uh, Court's idea about, uh, really setting some regular schedules.
Yes.
I also wanted to bring in an idea of, um, now we actually are going back to the buildings for, um, student events. And parents are coming to drop off. What is a better, I'm coming to drop off. I'm so excited. And seeing people is exciting. So if we can maybe combine those dates, uh, if it's possible.
Then did we talk about having any evening opportunities?
Yeah, that was just a TBD date.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, let's do the rest.
Last week.
The own favorite coffees.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, policies, back to policies, Court.
So, so this is a second reading and it's not what the first reading was. Um, and you have it in your packet. Uh, specifically, the changes we have made since we saw you last on the topic of community use of facilities, uh, is that we have reduced some of the rates, uh, such that we think we can still achieve the cost recovery that is, uh, our obligation, but still, uh, make use by, uh, community groups, uh, more attractive to them, less onerous, uh, in the cost to them. Uh, we've cut it fine, uh, to accomplish that with some of the changes. I'll review those. There are no other changes, except maybe a little bit of formatting in the document that you're familiar with. Uh, I want to, at this point, acknowledge Jared Stanton, Ian Rames and Lori Hunter, uh, notably, uh, and also Dorothy Presser from MASC, all of whom helped. This was a very long process. None of us wanted it to take this long. I think we all know why it took so long. But, uh, we hope we have arrived. We believe as a policy subcommittee, we have arrived with a, uh, proposal that we will move for adoption tonight, uh, by way of the, uh, updated policies. Uh, highlights, uh, about changes. Uh, one, the emphasis that, uh, these will not take, uh, effect until December, sorry, September one of this year. And number two, that, uh, we continue to believe that the, uh, volume discount, I'll call it, uh, the multiple use discount is, uh, in the best interest of the school district and the, uh, groups using the schools. And then specifically on the changes, uh, we'll point out that the, uh, auditorium fees were reduced. So if in your document in your packet, you have in a particular column two fees, it's the lesser of the two that is, uh, the one we're moving forward. Uh, we lowered the high school auditorium, uh, for both the tier two or group two and group three users. Uh, we reduced the, uh, middle school and elementary school auditorium, uh, fully by half. A third one, we reduced the gymnasium at the high school for group two and group three. And we reduced the, uh, grass fields at the high school, uh, for group three. Those, I believe, are the, uh, changes that we have made, uh, very recently. And we bring this full packet to you now for, uh, second read and an adoption, and I would so move.
So if, so I'm down in the, a little confused on the chart. What are the green numbers?
So that was, the, the lower number is the go-forward number. In the housekeeping on this document, the earlier numbers were not eliminated, forgive me. So high school, fifty dollars and a hundred dollars respectively. Uh, auditorium at the middle school, group three, seventy-five dollars, uh, instead of one fifty. High school gymnasium, fifty instead of seventy-five, group two, a hundred instead of one seventy-five, group three. And finally, grass field, group three, seventy-five, not one hundred.
And the turf field state too.
Uh, yes, and the reasoning, uh, was, was this. Um, the other turf field administered by the town through its recreation department, uh, is, uh, receiving most of the use. Um, and, uh, that is, uh, something that we, uh, are not displeased with. Uh, the need is being met, uh, but it's not putting a, uh, a, a liability out in front of the district faster than it has to in terms of turf, turf replacement. Mr. Stanton, uh, would you word it better than that? Forrest, what do you think? Um, we're not denying anybody the use, but, uh, we don't believe that the recreation department is turning anybody away.
Yep, I don't think I could have worded it any better.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask one question?
Please.
I'm looking at the chart in the very, 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 very bottom.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it's just a formatting question. Are, is group three the only group that is subject to cancellation charges or fees? Or is it just?
Uh, no, no, it's not. That would, uh, if, if we, uh.
Yeah. So like the way it's reading, it looks like group three is the only group subject to cancellation.
Just a suggestion if it's not.
Looks like a formatting.
Literally hit return.
I wasn't ready for that one.
No, no, no. It applies to all. Yes.
To see if it just looks, it's all in that same paragraph with group three, so it looks like it's only applicable to them.
Ah, yes, enter.
Does that make sense? I know that's like. You're seemingly nitpicky probably, but.
That's good.
Good, so we will, we'll put a carriage return in there, right, Mr. Stanton?
Yes, we will. Do that right now.
Good catch. Thank you very, very much.
It was more a question.
Yep.
And.
Uh, what we, uh, have committed to, as has the business office, is a thorough assessment after one year history with this to see how we landed.
I think we should have a, uh, a report.
Yes.
Or something. And then as we begin booking, there's, uh, summer twenty-three, um, reservations that we have raised clear.
Well, summer twenty-three reservations will be incoming as of, uh, February.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
We won't have a full year behind us to evaluate, but we can do a preliminary eval after this summer.
Yeah, we'll be able to look at.
A full year too.
We'll be able to look at booking, you know, reservations for the summer of twenty-three versus twenty-two. So you can say under each of.
Our customers should be anticipating the following costs.
Yes.
Right, yeah. So it's not a surprise.
I have another question. Group two residents, do like individual, I mean, this is just ignorant. Do individuals rent the organization? So what does that mean?
It, uh.
It did, that implies like.
That, that.
I want to come and sit in class.
That means a, a local organized group.
Okay, so resident.
Doesn't mean a birthday party, for example.
Yeah, that just, it.
No, it's a good question.
Intuitive to me. That looks like Alexa wants to rent the auditorium.
You would have to go through somebody.
By myself, yeah. You know.
You have to find some other.
So it's resident organizations, residents who head organization. What does that mean? I don't know what it means.
It means the organization is, resides in the district.
Okay.
Or the majority of members reside in the district.
Okay.
So it has to make, it has to have a legitimate, uh, district.
Little subjective?
A little subjective, yeah. And now that you bring it up. I know we want to pass this.
Well, let's, let's, let's think of it, let's think of a national organization.
IDM comes in.
A national, uh, organization, it's a nonprofit that has a local chapter. And.
We get a little bit worse.
And we're, and we're dealing with the headquarters as the booking agent, but seventy percent of the people coming to the event are district residents. That's where the business office would say that, uh, passes muster under this.
I think this, this is, this is sort of what tied up the whole.
Oh, this is a bill.
Well, this is a lot of things, but, but this, so.
And then so the, so private organizations and other non, so there could be some nonprofit organizations that would be in group three.
Yes, the out-of-district nonprofit doing something that, uh, does not, is not for the primary benefit of district residents in our estimation.
So I, I'll just give it like.
So like the MSWOP is a nonprofit.
What about like the mighty moose that is giving to ovarian cancer?
That's kind of.
They can make strong statements.
Their run, it's organized by residents, it falls into group two.
But actually, the cross borders comes and says.
If your point is, even with this clarity, there is, uh, some, uh, decision-making, some determination to be made. Sometimes the answer is yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, yes. It's nuanced.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're okay with that amount of subjectivity.
Well.
In the, in the, it passes two tests.
Yeah.
It benefits district residents and it does so, uh, in such a way that costs are recovered, um, and doesn't interfere with our, our funded mission under state law.
Thank you, Fain May. I think we set out with the idea, this lofty goal of that we will, we will be the first district to figure out how to make something that is non-subjective and leaves no room for, for interpretation. And gosh darn it, we tried. It's not for lack of effort, but, yeah.
So I, I just want to like, again, so would better language be resident organizations rather than residents?
Well, we'd have to kick it back then.
Well, are we, are we voting?
Okay, let's just vote. Subjectivity it is. Let's go. Sorry about that.
We're just.
You know, as the subjectivity, as the people who are really, you know, use the policy, when we're not sure, and it's probably happened three or four times in my five years, if I'm not sure or not comfortable in, along with the business office, guess what? I bring it right back to this group and I say, what do you want to do?
I forgot we were on a second reading.
We make decisions.
No, it's all right.
It isn't going to be cast in stone, right?
No, no.
And I think this can, yes, one hundred percent. At least you put it in place for.
Let me, but I, I, I think, I, I try not to belabor this. We can make it easy.
This is fine.
No, 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 no. First of all, in the policy, there's lots of superintendent prerogative, uh, as it should be. Second, she can always kick it to us if she wants to and deems that wise. Third, there's language in here that says, uh, you're not, uh, coming to us with a birthday party or a keynote night or something like that.
And you don't realize that the minute we ask for an insurance.
Insurance, you don't have it.
And that's the final one I was going to go to is, uh, if you're a resident, you've got to be organized enough to have an insurance policy that covers your group. And so that takes care of it, I think.
I'm satisfied.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to just add one thing. This policy is, is, is as complete as possible because all of the links work and provide additional clarification to every, to every part.
Okay, thanks. All right.
All right. Uh, so is that, okay, we'll come back to that for a vote.
Looks wonderful, guys.
Did all that discussion happen after or before a second?
No, we haven't voted.
Never. A second.
Do we need?
Now the motions are further down.
We're not in action items.
Never mind, thank you.
We're like chit-chatting. Yeah, it's fun.
But to that goal.
Sorry.
I will be very quick with, uh, G and H, I think. The G, actually, I hadn't, I, I, I'm just proposing to now add to our agendas going forward, this little link to a snapshot from our, um, school committee user guide, right? Just so that people, somewhere on the agenda, I don't really care where it goes, but just so people sort of understand, like, what it is we discuss, like, how we behave ourselves, what our practices are and how we expect, um, to, to interface with, um, with the public. And just a little snapshot into open meeting law, just to remind people of why it is that these meetings are, um, conducted the way they, they are. Okay? So if everybody's okay with that, I would propose adding that going forward. Okay. The second thing is the community communication that I just very briefly wanted to propose to you guys. Um, these two links that I sent, and I don't know if I can screen share them or if, if it doesn't do any, just screen share. Um, gosh, now I gotta find them on my computer, hold on. Um, so just, uh, um, a number of issues have come up in the past couple of days or past couple of weeks that have made me become aware of some inconsistencies in how we handle communications. Just, just little background, right? And so I took a deep dive and made a spreadsheet of all of the school committee, like, the electronic communications that we've received so far officially through our school committee thing and looked at, you know, did it go to the region, did it go to Concord, did it go to, to Lori? Did she kick it to us? Did we kick it back to her? Who responded? What was the reason for somebody being the one to respond? And I couldn't find a consistent, like, there, there, it, it's just kind of, um, you know, sometimes it's convenient for you to respond to something, say, like, you know, like the yearbook question, right? Like, who, right? Like, and so we just figured, or it just makes sense to kind of streamline how we manage the, the, the responses so that we are all on the same page as to how we get to, to a response. Because I think we have a good, we have a practice more or less of, like, if I'm going to respond, I'll sort of vet some language back and forth just to make sure that I'm not saying anything that, that the admin wouldn't be aware of. And so just to make sure that we all, uh, so let me figure out how to share.
So it's a tracking mechanism?
It's a tracking mechanism. And so, yeah, so let's see. So the, I guess I can quickly share the school committee. Why can I not find anything right now? We've got the emails. Um, just to give you an idea of what I'm tracking. And then if you guys, just in your own time, because I know I only shared it yesterday, right? Like, here are the emails that we've had, um, and just kind of like what the topic has been and when they came in and, and who replies. And so if you guys in your, you know, can take some time to look at that and then just give some feedback as to what is useful information for us. Because I, I think it is interesting to keep track of what are people writing about, right?
So you can see patterns.
And C and C patterns. And what I haven't figured out is how to capture, like, what was the follow-up, right? Other than just the first reply, where did it, you know, where did it go from? Was, were there, there more communication? So that's, I mean, that gets into a whole nother level, but I think if we all kind of just think about what's useful to know, and if it's not useful to anybody, then like, you know, I don't know. But it's useful for me. And so I think it might be something that helps everybody stay aware of, um, and so while I was making this, it made me think about something else, which is, I don't want to pop up any, like, this, this flowchart, um.
The visual update is helpful.
Yep, I am. I'm going to pull it up now. There we go. All right, so this flowchart of what, how emails come into us, right? Because I realized we have emails that come in. Sometimes people reach out directly, right? Sometimes they reach out directly to you as like an individual, but sometimes they reach out to you as a school committee member. So we have emails that come in that way. We have an online submission form. And sometimes emails come in through, through the administration that are actually meant really more school committee questions. So I started to think about, right, what, is this a school committee matter? Is it an operations, right, for each of those subtypes? And for those, I kind of made another subtype down. Um, and so again, this is not to, we're not going to be filling in bubbles right now. It's just to show you guys what my thinking of, like, that it might be useful to spend some time as a group thinking about how we want to be, manage these things. Because, again, just so that everybody knows how emails are being responded to and how we are capturing and, um, and tracking the information in the, in the communications that we have going back and forth. So that's, uh.
So is your thinking, we digest this and put it on a future agenda item?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if, if, yeah, if, if that's of interest to, you know, if this could help make us more efficient and make us, um, more aware of.
I would defer to the chairs because the chairs are, are, and the superintendent are the spokespeople and the respondents to all of this. So if.
Great.
I, I don't want to belabor it here because we're going to bring it up in the future, but I would say work it fully so you can give us more information about the experience, you know? Did it pay off? It's work.
I.
It's work, is the, uh, is the consequence really going to benefit you and the committee to, to merit all that work? I, I hope so.
I'll tell you self, like, just the process of putting together the spreadsheet, right? Which then led to this, made me much more conscientious of, of how, um, like, I would want our relationship, like, our, interact, like, I've seen, I've seen signs, you know, sometimes we, we've had great, I, I like when we work together on, uh, on the responses, like, I like when we align. I like when, uh, when we understand how our messaging, um, really reflects our work. And, um, so I liked, I don't know, I liked doing.
Yes, it's good because it, it, sometimes it's confusing what's going on. So I think it helps us establish sort of a, an ability to know how it's going to go a little bit.
I think one thing that I am keen that's far more simple than flowcharts and whatever, um, is potentially to look at the adoption of an expected timeframe from when we would respond to residents, uh, our constituent emails, um, to ensure that we do because there have been, you know, there have been some that have slipped through the cracks. And then finally, to ensure that everyone on this committee is copied so that we all know what the response is, if there was a response at all. Because oftentimes, there have been several times this year where I just, when a resident has asked me who's written a letter, I haven't known whether there's been a response.
Sure.
Um, because, you know, I don't know if the letter's gone out or if I just haven't been CC'd on it.
Yeah.
So I think that is something that's really important, and I don't think it wasn't our handbook.
It wasn't. And I think, I mean, part of the issue, what I was seeing is that there, because sometimes the, sometimes, like, Cynthia will sometimes get a message that's really meant for the region or the region will sometimes get a message that's really meant for Concord. And so it gets very muddled in who, or sometimes it's like, oh, we had to check in and get an answer on something.
It said Concord. It didn't say Concord Regional, right?
Right, yeah, yeah. And, or like, there, it requires more information from somebody else within the administration team or within what, wherever, like, one of the buildings or something. And sometimes in the process of those communications, the actual, like, everybody, you know, too many becomes a lot of cooks involved, right? So I think, like, for example, so putting together this spreadsheet, right? If we are always populating the spreadsheet within, with, when an email comes in, it goes up onto the spreadsheet, then you know, has it been, you know, there's an empty box on the who responded? And you can look the next day and say, wait a second, that's right, no one responded to this. So I've got to get that back on my, uh, on my radar.
Yeah, and I think the spreadsheet's super helpful for the chairs, definitely. And I feel like, uh, for me, like, it's just knowing that if I get a response, because when people do take the time to email the school committee, it populates all of our email addresses, right? And so, and everybody knows that we're all reading it. So it's just, you know, to be copied on the response, I think is helpful just because that, that I'm not trying to find the spreadsheet in my email because I just had a hard time finding it, I'll just admit. Um, you know, and so.
That's easy to do. I would just use the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, but I, I do like the spreadsheet.
In the, in the planning memo.
Yes, no, I saw it there. But, but I think it's just like for the future, just as a user tool, I think to have that, um, if we're copying on it, then, then you know, like, oh, the email that just came in this weekend, and I would agree with the timeframe, um, because, you know, I just, I just think about schools and you think about.
I think one business day is, is, is fair.
Yeah.
I think it can be longer. I just think, and even if something, even if, as Sarah mentioned, there's a lot that might go into it, a nice email saying, we've received it, we're working on it.
Yeah.
Expect a response.
We're not working on it, we've received it, right?
Well, there are lots.
Well, there are some things that need a response.
This, these little bubbles, right, is ongoing issue, is it something that works?
Because we can't say, we could say we're working on it.
We're working on the responses, what I mean, if it's going to take three or four days.
Hmm, this is where we need to deliberate almost about any question that comes to us.
One person can't say that for the group.
So, you know, they, they, you know, that's where I think we need to be careful because we're exact, we're setting some expectation that they're going to get more from us. And I don't think that's.
I'm just talking about the specific instances where Sarah outlined that we were going to get more and that was why it was taking so long and then they got lost and slipped through the cracks. So if either we are crafting more robust responses and it's taking a long time, or we're not.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it, it's just, it's not very, like, the thing I'm thinking of is like the, my Caruso email, for example, right? That required some extra information, but you didn't know how much information it needed, like, it was, and.
So this is operational.
Most of it's, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So, I mean.
But usually when there's an, like, extra thing, and that's just, that's just why it's just better to check in with Lori Moore on, on the, on when they come in, I think.
Yeah, I'm usually hanging back and wait to see.
Yep. Okay, do we want to discuss the con, the online form at all, or that's?
I, I, I do, because I think that's a communication.
So let's make it clear what we're talking, we're talking about the online form.
It's under communication.
To send us an email.
I think it might be a simple problem if others agree it's a problem and thus worth solving. Um, uh, recently I got a letter from a, uh, person in town and, uh, I thought, well, very nice, but this should go to the school committee and the superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
So I send it back, um, send it to the school committee and the superintendent, here's how to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then my next communication was, I went there, I'm not doing that. That's a online form. If I fill out your online form, it goes into the ether. I don't even have a copy of what I sent. I want to, I want your email address. So I had to hunt around for our email address, which, or, um, but I wonder if this is something that repeats itself frequently? And should we, instead of having a fill-in-the-boxes, just give people at the same location, just give them that group email address?
Well, it used to be the case, and this was probably ten years ago, because I, I used to send emails, um, and it used to be that all the emails would populate in there. And so you would see, you would say, contact school committee, it would all populate in there.
Hmm.
And all the email addresses would do that. It went right through your mail program. And I don't know if it was a change in the website, but I do think that, you know, the middle school had the form, that, right, because I, I emailed the Concord Middle School building group also, and that's that form process. And some people don't like the form, but it is consistent.
But is there a reason we would withhold our email address? Let me put it that way.
It's the first time reasons, or?
Not our personal, just that Concord, whatever, school committee.
It should be listed on the website.
Whatever it is, right? Is it, but.
It's not listed, but you could, you could just add next to our names, you know, Team Toronto.
Right.
ConcordPS.org.
It's not like we're not sharing.
No.
Oh, no, that's not my phone, no.
So, yeah, so I think either we should add the functionality to the online form to, uh, yes, send a copy of the thing and add the ability to add an attachment. So those are two, the two drawbacks to the online form in my mind.
So we're moving to the operational side, but it's about school committees, so I think it's appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And in an ideal world, you'd be able to have it so that it, like, it, the person's email address just auto-populated into the CC like that we get, right? Because responding, like, being able to hit reply, right, versus, because right now you've got to.
I do a whole new, you know.
Copy, like, and it's hard to be able to count what's, put in what they have in, it just, it's extra, yeah.
I mean, I do, I will say on the user end, I do like it when it says, email the Concord school committee. And I know that that's going to be public, you know, that's a public correspondence.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's.
So maybe we'll do a little offline research and.
See what other people are doing and see what we like. Yeah, okay, that's it for that. Okay. Uh, additional public comments, uh, if there's any members of the public who would like to speak, please raise your hands in person, virtually. No? Okay, we'll go to action items then. Go to approve the installation of an outdoor art display.
Looks really cool.
Yeah. Dr. Hunter, do you want to speak about this?
Yeah, I think the memo's really thorough with the visuals and everything, but it's a really exciting opportunity to have an alternate creative way to display student work.
Yeah.
We're getting a nice, I don't know what word to use outside those art rooms, uh, but the high school, but with the boulders and the other things that they creatively keep coming up with, it's really turning into a really special spot. So this will take it a whole nother level, so excited by the idea.
Great, so do you have a motion?
Yeah, awesome. There is, is there someone who would like to make a motion? That the Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to approve the installation of an outdoor art display at CCHS as presented?
So moved?
Great.
Second.
Discussion?
Looks fantastic.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. All right, uh, roll call.
Uh, question, um, I'm studying this again. Is the, uh, sheer size of this thing such that, uh, you need any permitting? So there's something beyond?
We'll double-check that, I didn't think so, but we'll certainly.
I don't know.
I don't know.
All right, because it, because it looked like a, a real structure.
To a point, yeah.
To a point, okay, so, fine, thank you.
Okay. So we'll vote, um, and Dr. Hunter will follow up.
Any necessary.
Yep, okay.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Mustafi, I.
Rainey, I for region.
Rankin, I.
Wilson for region, thank you, okay. Um, two, vote to approve school committee representation to superintendent's, uh, Metco advisory group. All right, I don't know who takes the lead, it's your advisory group, so you take.
Yeah, I'm looking for two of you to join me beginning Thursday with the Metco group, which has other people to it too, but that's really the, the focus right now. Uh, a number, a lot of you have expressed interest, I think I'll say it that way, since it's more than, more than, more of you than not have expressed interest. So I think you want to have that conversation tonight, and then decide, decide who you want to have sit, sit in. And it looks like it'll be an evening commitment, obviously, so we can accommodate everyone's schedule, so it's probably a six o'clock event. I'm thinking monthly for the rest of the year, at least, so that's not too big of a lift, but probably worth noting while you're deciding.
I, we, we're willing to withdraw my expression of interest, um, should Tracy Morano serve, so we wouldn't have a DEI quorum issue.
Thank you, I would love to serve. I'll just put it out there, I think I was like, or I was an early adopter, I'm like, please let me on. Um, you know, this is, it's something I definitely would like to do, and, you know, my kids have had a great experience with Metco, and, and I do have relationships with Boston families, so I would love to be part of that.
Just because I'm not, um, I, I would love to be on a DEI subcommittee, uh.
Oh, then, oh, yeah.
We'd be.
Then we can, okay.
Forum, and, uh, you know, I think you, you're great representing the DEI subcommittee and the committee overall. Um, and, yeah.
I would be happy to serve, and, uh, especially, I'm very interested in this, and especially since I can, because it's an evening opportunity, I would be happy to do it.
I am not going to throw my hat in it. Tracy is, uh, Tracy has such a big connection to, to the, uh, policy, uh, work, so that makes, uh, that makes a lot of sense. Um, I am running for reelection, so, uh, we definitely need someone as a continu, uh, continually starting and finishing, starting and continuing on with, uh, with this, um, advisory group, uh, because, uh, those conversations and those relationships are important to build from the beginning.
Anybody?
Yeah, I would love to do it as well. Um, I, I think this is, DEI work is something that we as a community, and certainly in our schools, have a lot of room for growth and improvement, and, um, I've really, I have a lot of capacity at this point, I'm not on any of the subcommittees, so I have the ability to really invest in, in this work. Um, and then, you know, lastly, I'm, um, I, I, I don't know what it's like to be a Metco family, I never will, and I, I don't know what it's like to be a person of color living in Concord, but I, um, have the ability to listen, and I'm really eager to, to take action, so I'd really be honored to be on this, um, committee.
Um, yeah, I know, in an ideal world, we would be forming this committee at the same time as seating a new committee, right? But that's not, we never live in an ideal world, right? Because, because it goes with a whole broader conversation of where, where do we distribute our resources of our human power?
I'll defer to you as chair to have a, move us along.
How to move us along, I have no idea how to move this along. Um, I, well, I guess we have to have, we have nominations, right? We have, and, uh, okay, um, and then we have a vote, right? So.
It's a good problem to have, I just point out how much dedication is on this committee. I mean, uh, everyone on this committee is, um, spending their personal time, because they really care and they really are invested in, in this work.
That's, so thank you. Yes.
I know, it's an embarrassment.
I, uh, I would offer up, uh, that I am, I am sympathetic to, uh, Cynthia's, uh, daytime commitment in her job and eagerness to serve when a nighttime thing comes up. I do recognize Carrie's eagerness to, uh, participate in this in particular. Uh, and I would add, we will all have plenty on our plate when we, uh, divide up the, the assignments for next year. So Cynthia and Carrie, if, uh, one of you doesn't prevail, Tracy does, and one of you doesn't, two being the limit, I'm confident there'll be plenty of subcommittee.
Oh, my gosh.
Everybody here.
Oh, yeah.
Including some nights, yeah.
Yeah, no, because it's, I mean, really, you two are the only ones who really aren't on a subcommittee.
Yes.
Right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, so, we, we take nominations and?
We have nominations, right?
Yeah.
We have three. Or three authors, I guess it's not a nomination, whatever, same thing.
Yeah. Okay, so how do we do this, yeah?
Do we vote, or how did we do that in advance?
How do you usually do it?
Well, we, we, we have a couple of options. One is we table this and, uh, let the, uh, three people talk offline, but that's deliberation, so that's not an option.
But I think the first meeting is on Thursday.
Exactly. Two is, we don't have the time, so, three, uh, we, uh, should somebody not, uh, withdraw their expression of interest, we are going to disappoint somebody. There's, there's no way out.
That happens.
There's no way out.
Yeah.
That's okay, I think we're adults.
It's a public body, that's what happens.
So do we propose, like, different slate, like, you know?
I, I don't know, but, uh, one way is we have individual nominations, and, uh, they're, they're up and down until two are, are named. Another is we have somebody make a motion for a slate of two, and we see how that prevails, when it's subject to a vote.
Yep. Which way is these?
And we can have two rotating, right?
No, no, no.
No, I, I wouldn't, sorry, I, I just.
Again, it's a relationship situation, you know, yeah, relationships are important, I think.
I moved at the school committee, uh, the Concord Carlisle School Committee, uh, appoint Tracy Morano and Cynthia Rainey to serve on the superintendent's, let me get the word right here, uh, Metco advisory group.
Okay, second.
Uh, I do this, uh, with the full knowledge that, uh, I'm disappointing somebody, should this vote prevail, who's, uh, superbly qualified, and, uh, thankfully, very, very eager to serve on something very, very important. Um, so, uh, for that, I, I apologize. I want to move us along, if it's possible.
No apology necessary.
Okay. So how does this go then? So we do a roll call on this one, and then we see where we are.
If it passes, we're done, if it doesn't pass, somebody else puts something forward, there's no other way about it. Where, this is.
The fun part.
This is the fun part of doing, uh, doing elected work, yes, exactly, nobody likes it.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, so, uh, it was a roll call, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Yep.
Anderson, nay.
Booth, I.
Morano, nay.
Oh, it's my turn, uh, nay.
Uh, it's my turn, right?
Yeah.
Rainey, I.
Wilson, I.
Rankin, nay.
I'm sorry.
Motion fails.
Okay.
Okay.
Can somebody make another?
Yeah, someone else.
I move, uh, Tracy Morano and Carrie Rankin, uh, be appointed to serve as the school committee representatives on the superintendent's Metco advisory group.
A second.
Discussion.
Roll call. Anderson, I.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Oh, Mustafi, I.
Rainey, I.
Wilson, I. Oh, sorry.
So hard with you, not in the room.
Carrie, your vote.
Oh, sorry, it froze a little bit, uh, Rankin, I.
It passes unanimously, the chair so declare.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
So, we're on to facilities.
Finally get this over the feet at the, uh, finish line.
Yep. Okay, so their vote to approve the policies, KF facility use and KFR community use regulations and fees.
So moved as presented.
I will so enthusiastically second it after mine.
All right, is there a discussion? You, everyone.
Anderson, I.
Booth, I for both districts.
I for both.
Morano, I for both.
Mustafi, I for region.
Rainey, I for both.
Rankin, I for both.
And Wilson for region, okay, great.
Did you forget one? C.
Oh, C, sorry, uh, C has become, um.
Ooh, we shouldn't mention that.
Yeah, sorry.
Unnecessary.
An unnecessary, um, the circumstances have changed, and, uh, C is not needed at this time, so. Um, thank you. Um, and with that, I'll go to, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Anderson, I can.
Booth, I.
Morano, I.
Mustafi, I.
Rainey, I, sorry.
Rankin, I.
And Wilson, I for re, yeah, oh, it's only region, okay, thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, sorry to make you all go through the roll call tonight.
Feel better.
Do we, do we, uh, recess for 60 seconds?
Sure, well, more than 60 seconds. And Concord, uh, school committee comes back in a session, and first thing is the middle school project update. Significant news.
I already referenced, uh, meeting a week from Thursday, that'll be April 14th, 7:30, that's the design subcommittee, and then there is perhaps a little bit tentative, uh, a meeting on Thursday, the 21st, when it's school vacation week for the full building committee.
I think it's going to be the 28th.
And I'm, I was guessing that would happen sooner or later, thank you very much, Dr. Hunter. Okay, uh, beyond that, I have nothing to report.
Yeah, I think a lot of the work is happening with the architects who pop up in our worlds fairly often right now, so they just made a request to set up another round of meetings, police, fire, users of the common spaces, gym, auditorium. I, I feel like we're doing the other side of the school, we did the academic wing a cup, two weeks, a week ago, and now we're doing, moving on to the other side. So from now till the end of the month, Justin's office has arranged those users with SMMA, and you, you and Cole, we've got the police and fire chief lined up and getting all that work that's going to go in to inform what the, bring to both the design subcommittee and the full committee as they make their way through the design work, so.
Are we aware of any, uh, movement with the light plant since we, uh, last communicated with them?
Not per se, but I have, actually, I'm going to take that back, there's now an active email exchange going on between the vendor, SMMA, and CMLP, that every now and then I see passed through my email. So there's, there's, there are things happening.
So we'll, we'll get a report out on the 28th.
I would think so.
Good, good, okay, thank you.
And same with that, like, soil testing and all that.
Yeah, so they finished the borings, uh, that happened a little over a week ago, last, yeah, last, last week, um, seems to have gone smoothly with a pipe that got damaged that we've worked through with the town and our repair maintenance folks. So things to be, seem to be on track, they're moving, right? You know, we're just kind of trying to respond at the pace that they need us to, to keep it all moving forward.
Great.
Yeah.
Uh, so next is the budget, and I want to put this into context, because we are meeting with the FinCom on Thursday, that's starting at seven, but we'll probably start our push around 7:30, um, because, yeah. Um, so I sent you all sort of a framework for the conversation, they'll present first, then, uh, we'll have a discussion, both from Dr. Hunter with a presentation, I presume.
Few slides.
Um, and perhaps, uh, I've noticed on your slides that you have, uh, some, not reductions, I'll call them, but things, and then when you have talked about them, you've talked about other things, like kindergarten teachers, but I can't actually find that in the budget, for example, the kindergarten.
Yeah, so I'm going to consolidate all of that, so it's all in one place, and somewhat like I verbally did with you two weeks ago, frame what we did to get to where we are, hypothesize of what we'd have to do next, and then I think they're asking for some other cost reduction ideas for the future, which are loose at the moment, but we have, I have an idea or two to share.
Okay. Um, so that's the framework for that conversation, I don't know what more work we want to do tonight.
Let me ask Dr. Hunter a question, if you were to share ideas with them, and they were to be highly receptive to those ideas, would you then bring them back to the school committee to see if, in fact, uh, we would move in that direction too, is that the path that this?
Receptive, well, first you're in joint session, so you'll all be able to participate, um, I'm not sure I'm clear on the question.
You're, the way I heard it, we may hear of, uh, what, items to look at in the budget for further consideration for the first time Thursday night.
That will not be my recommendation, though, they're going to be on, very much like what I said to you two weeks ago, this is where we would have to go if, if we don't get the funding for the budget I've recommended, but I'm not going to recommend those cuts, I know that.
And if you know, uh, how they're starting to take shape, are they all student-facing cuts at this point in time?
Or professional development.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions or concerns, or, okay, good. Uh, so now we're on to the.
I, I, one question, so will we, will we convene at 7:30 just without our, I mean, sorry, at 7:00, without our members who will be in that meeting, so we should.
Gavel in when everybody comes.
Okay, so we can, okay, I'm just, should I be there at 7:00 if I can be? Huh? Should I be there at 7:00 if I can be, is, will that be helpful to get a quorum, is what I'm asking?
Um, well, we'll just gavel in, it's.
Okay, at 7:30, yeah, okay, that's okay, okay.
And should we consider maybe, are we zooming from the townhouse?
I was going to zoom from the townhouse.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're right, so I'm right there.
Right, good.
Okay.
You can zoom.
Sorry. Do you want me to zoom in, how, I can zoom in, I should just zoom in, okay.
Yeah, so the link should be there.
So Tracy, that's up to you, if you want to zoom in.
Yeah.
And just do all the zooms from home, or find space at the time.
I, I can probably run to the townhouse, I'm not going to, but I could run there in like, you know, 10 minutes, but no. Um, yeah, I might come, do you think they'll have two spaces, or should we be in one? Uh, because I can easily, I mean, I literally live around the corner, so it's, it's fine, I'll just zoom from home, because it might give weird feedback, okay.
Okay, good, so we're all set up for that, and then the last, oh.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
So we have one more agenda item, and, and you, why don't you kick us off?
Sure, so we're bringing you back, it's framed under the capital plan, but really, we wanted to spend a little time on the Alcott boiler, on why we're. we wanted to spend a little time on the Alcott boiler, and why we're, why we are where we are. There's been questions that have come up from multiple places, so it seemed logical that we would put together the history of the project and refresh that for everyone's knowledge, because the history is significant and does go back considerably. Really, the question has become about the choice of not pushing towards electric. So Jared's got a few slides where he and Ian and Russ gathered all that together. You know, I think ultimately, I'm gonna cut to the chase, and then he can do the details. Ultimately, we're too far down the path for electric to be a viable option. There's a question of can we look at it for the other two elementary schools? We could certainly look at it, and he'll reference that. And you'll see, this, this project started 2013 was the first audit that sent us down this, this road and then a revisit, so.
Can you possibly send these around? It's pretty hard.
Yeah, they just finished them at 5 o'clock.
And then please link them to the meeting after the fact, so the public.
Jerry, can you make those bigger so we can see them?
Yep, let me put it in a, I'm on the wrong screen, one sec.
I'll email it to Aaron and the committee, so you'll have me too.
I have a slideshow going, and I can't, too many screens again.
You need to do it?
There we go.
All right.
You have to pull them up again, Jared.
Uh, how about? Now. Can you do that?
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I have three screens. Once again. Good, so I'll just go through these. We put together three, three slides that sort of tell the history of, you know, the, the boiler and Alcott situation, as well as a few other challenges, and then what, and what a hybrid heating system would look like. So back in 13, Energy Management, Energy Management Associates performed a district-wide audit. In this audit, they identified, surprise, surprise, PB and Sandborn as the most inefficient natural gas consumers with the fastest payback. With the assistance of the Green Communities Grant, the boilers and the control systems were upgraded in 15 and 16. Next, they identified Alcott and Ripley as our most inefficient natural gas consumers. They estimated that Alcott's payback to be about 7.4 years compared to 8.7 for Ripley. Therefore, the school committee and the administration at that time prioritized Alcott and added the boiler in the energy recovery units, also known as EOU's, upgrades to the 2016 capital plan. In 19, administration worked with Concord Sustainability Director Kate Hanley to produce the 2019 RISE audit that estimated a 12% annual reduction in gas use with the installation of the new high-efficiency boilers at Alcott. The existing boilers are 80% efficient, the proposed replacements are 96.2% efficient. The audit also did not recommend full electrification. EOU's were approaching the end of their useful life, so they were upgraded first as part of the capital plan. Our EOU's were replaced during the summer of 2021 at a cost of $736,000. And we also expect significant savings from gas and electrical due to this upgrade. There are some challenges to full electrification of the heating system. Again, we worked with the BLW engineers to identify some challenges to fully electrify the heating system. To do this, all current hot water coils, units, and piping would need to be removed, and new heat pumps, fan coils, branch control boxes, and refrigerant piping circuits would have to be installed. Interior spaces would also be impacted. The existing EOU's would need to be modified or replaced. The existing makeup air systems would also need to be replaced. There'll be massive upgrades to the building envelope and vapor barriers will be recommended to minimize the size of the heat pumps. Replacements and upgrades to existing building electrical service generators and electrical distribution systems would be more than likely. It's possible we would need to close school for an extended period of time for the existing hot water heating system to be removed and for electrical upgrades. And lastly, while natural gas would no longer be needed to heat the building, it would still be required to serve domestic water heaters and the emergency generator. Alternative option, the hybrid heating system, this option continues with the boiler upgrades with the intent of supplementing them with heat pumps in the future. The amount of natural gas use would be reduced but not eliminated. Natural gas would still be needed to serve the emergency boilers, the makeup air units, EOU's, domestic water heaters, and emergency generators. Although extensive upgrades in the building envelope and vapor barriers is still strongly recommended to minimize the size of the heat pump, we just don't know how much, how much of a upgrade we would need. There will most likely be replacement and upgrades to existing building electrical service generators, electrical distribution systems. The building upgrades to accommodate heat pumps can be phased over multiple summers, so the buildings can remain open during the school year. And lastly, dedicated spaces for the heat pump units would need to be found.
So our recommendation is we stay the course. You can hear there's options down the road potentially to do some hybrid heat pump work. Finish the Alcott project as planned, which did result from energy audits along the way. Wasn't a blind plan with, with no sustainability pieces in mind. In fact, that was the actual intent. And then, you know, we make our way through the Ripley project, which is really to become electric over here for the most part, on already we're hitting challenges and complications and unexpected costs. And then have that discussion for the other two elementaries. It's not, I don't think any of us feel like it's a discussion of philosophy, it's a discussion of finances mostly, so. Then we could go from there.
Well, since this is such late-breaking news, and most citizens have been able to consume any of this before, right now. So we have been invited, I believe, I don't know if you were able to confirm that with Jerry Frankel.
We're emailing back and forth to confirm a date.
I, I think, I think they will review this anyway for town meeting with or without our attendance, I'm sure. At their meeting.
Yeah, we're happy to talk through with them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the.
Can you just explain Jerry Franklin, which committee that is, sorry?
He sent the letter.
He sent the letter, yeah, but it's a letter.
CSEC.
So, okay, so it's the CSEC.
Yes, he's chair of the CSEC.
Yeah.
So. I understand the, you know, the financial considerations, but, you know, the, the most recent IPCC report, I believe I'm getting the acronym correct, says we need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 43% by 2030. Or they basically said life is, we know it will not continue. So it's a pretty dire report. So I think we're getting, we, we need to be pretty aggressive, and that's, 2030 is very far away. So 43% is a significant number, and they said needs to level off by 2025. So I, I think not just the schools, but the town as well will probably raise their goals and attention to the matter. So I think we need to be sure to coordinate with town groups, because this will, not just for us, I mean, I, this is just gonna come up. I don't know, maybe I'm living in a different world.
No climate forecasting has proven to be exaggerated for the last 20 years. It only gets worse. And we've got students watching us as well as CSEC. My, my question for Jared and Russ is this. Is our present predicament pitting our short-term financial needs against our short-term effort to preserve life as we know it on the planet? And I don't mean to be what, you know, emotional about it, but we should be emotional about it, frankly. Does this give us a sufficient reason to use great care with our other facilities so that we don't have the same narrative? We've gone too far down a road. Are we changing those roads at the other buildings now? And can we say that with certainty so that we might have significant costs required, but the, the benefits seem to be, you know, without question necessary? So what, what are we doing to see that we don't put ourselves into this box again?
Right. Jared won't be here, and Russ is not on, so I'm gonna grab that one. We haven't done anything at Thoreau and Willard yet, so that's been explained a couple of times. You've got a, a clean slate to work with for, for multiple reasons that we wish hadn't happened with pandemics and fires. We intended to be farther down the path with Thoreau, but we're not, so. We're happy to put this lens on those projects ahead of planning and talk through what the options are before the plan gets made.
And is there, so I saw one number in there, Jared, on that first slide, it was like a number in the $750,000 ballpark. Is there a way to quantify the other options? Just to look at how much it would, all three options are gonna cost us?
Right, so I think, I'm hesitant to put a number. I know that we would have to work with BLW and get an engineering study. I think you're talking seven digits. I think that's for Alcott. I think that's, I think that's a number that we've been floating out there to, to do this. The other buildings, I'm not so sure. I think it's really important, though, to point out too, is right now, I think, you know, it's in the slide, we're currently at 80% efficient. This would go to 96.2, so whatever that number is, so that is significantly more efficient.
But. I mean, you clearly see the, the concern. It's not about efficiency, it's about being electrified versus gas.
Sure.
But.
It's about carbon.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I know.
Yeah, go ahead, Carrie.
What happens both from a process standpoint and an, and an environmental standpoint if this fails?
Your whole capital budget will fail, so we'll, that's an issue. Because then we can't do the other things that are planned.
And you'd be stuck with an 80% efficient boiler for the foreseeable future.
For? For how long? Until next year? Like, what does that mean?
This is your capital plan. I think that's the part I wanna stress, the plan that you voted, and if we're changing plans, I think that needs to be the discussion that we're having.
But it's.
I think we're not, clearly not all on the same page exactly, and I'm concerned about that going into town meeting, because I don't know if we're revoting or quite where we are, so. This is the plan you voted. We just brought you the backup to it, so it's your plan to talk about. Was there?
There's no plan to vote anything different tonight, so we can't.
I'd like to. We're gonna have to pursue Alexa's question anyway, sooner or later, for other bodies, even if this school committee doesn't pursue it.
Sure.
So I think it is contingent upon us to get more clarity on what the alternative would be. The, the risk of that is, it looks like we're you know, uncertain about the wisdom of the earlier vote for this being included. On the other hand, if we are looking at a clear sentiment from other parts of the community, Lori says it well, you know, we're different opinions, I think we have to be ready for that. And I think more information isn't gonna hurt us.
So I think you're up against the clock here. I met with Ian and Russ this afternoon. We brought you everything we can bring you with a full engineering study.
I did get that, yep.
So there's.
We have one more meeting, one more formal meeting before town meeting, and then we have town meeting. So.
And I guess I just wanna be cognizant of the fact that we're taking votes. You know, and this kind of goes into all of our discussion. We've taken the vote, and now, were we considering the vote and why?
We've done it many times in the past. Over many things, yeah.
Right, this is just really close to town meeting.
Yep, and that has happened before.
Do, I mean, are there examples of like, like, I just, I just.
We go on the floor sometimes.
On the floor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before town meeting.
Okay, I would just be interested to see, like, when that's happened and what has the result been?
I mean, I think the parking changed, got reduced because of the town getting involved at the end.
Well, the reason, the reason we might consider something anew is because circumstances around us have changed.
Well, I guess I'm just concerned that we're going into, you know, this is the second thing we're, that we've already voted on, that we're trying to consider, and they're fairly large things. One being the CPS budget, which I, you know, I think we're, well, I'll speak for myself, I'm in support of that.
We're talking about this.
No, I know, we're talking about this now, but I'm just giving another example of when we're voting on things, you know, we voted it, and we are the body that governs that.
But on the budget, that has lots of, you know, times in the past that has gone back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth.
Well, you, you all heard me on the budget. I hope you heard me. I voted in favor of that budget because the superintendent was very clear. She wanted a school committee recommendation behind her when she made her presentation, and my caveat was very clear. We're not done with the budget. Because until we go over it and make it our own, we're simply endorsing her initial recommendation. It's not our own until we understand it and we own it. And we're gonna be the ones that have to answer to town meeting, so that's why these conversations continue. You know, if the FinCom wants to continue a conversation, our choice is to continue it or stonewall them, but there's no, there's no third option.
We're continuing the conversation.
That's why it's, that's, that answers your question.
So we're continuing the conversation.
That's why it's still under review, because people have asked us to continue the conversation, so.
Right.
That's all.
I, I forgot to mention that the select board has not voted, has not voted on Article 18 yet.
Interesting, yeah.
So they're waiting.
They want, here's my interpretation. Whether it's CSEC or FinCom, they wanna see more of our homework.
Right.
That's all.
Yep.
I would just think my feelings on the matter are, in the future, I think we need to potentially not vote so early. If, if there are real concerns about things, I think it's better to articulate them transparently with each other.
I missed this completely. Didn't get to catch the word gas, like, it was just a boiler in my mind, right?
Yeah, so regardless of what the rationale is, I think that it's, I think it's just important we do better at
Of course.
Talking to each other about what our genuine feelings are about things.
Now, for the town projects, they should go through some kind of environmental review. Capital projects, not just the schools.
If we do it with curriculum, we can do it.
Well, so this, this is coming right out of that process. Kate Hanley was involved in the 2019 review that led to the Alcott boiler recommendation, so I just wanna say we had.
No, I know, but I'm saying.
I hear the disagreement now. I personally have some real concern about.
I.
We've got some work to do, I think, after the break, so that we know what we're bringing to town meeting and that we all feel
Yes.
Good about bringing that.
Yep.
I think, I suspect we're in great agreement on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't, there is no more homework we can bring you.
No, I'm not asking for more homework, no.
So in light of there's no more homework, so then where does that leave us? Wouldn't we then deliberate now if we have all the facts in front of us? Or do you anticipate more discussion on that?
I have to really digest this, I've just seen this information, right? I didn't even digest it all. Like, what the, the math is, I, I really need to read it. That's why. I appreciate the fact that you worked so hard to get it to us tonight.
That really quickly.
I, 100%, but I, I have to read something and think about it, and that's why I said, you know. And I don't, we have, we have no vote tonight. You know, we can have a vote on the 26th.
What I heard tonight was we have significant cost considerations. I don't know what seven digits means, it just means north of a million, but we're already north of a million between the ERU and, and the.
But some of the work has already started on the Alcott boiler, so this is just the finish up.
Well, that's why I say we're.
Go back and start over, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, I don't know what the real cost is, and I don't expect Jared would either, you know, because that's for.
Yeah, that's, that requires a lot more work.
Consultants to come in and do that, but the other thing he made very clear is if we were to do this without a long runway for planning, this would have bad programmatic implications for, for kids, so.
Right.
Once they say school closed.
I'm not gonna say it's a non-starter, because, you know, we can shut down a school if we have to. We, we shut down part of Thoreau, but it's not something we would ever intend to do.
I don't think we'd make that choice to do that. That's a little different, but.
Of course, yeah, yeah, of course. So I think we've gone as far as we can go on.
Yeah, I think so. For tonight.
So we have one more meeting before town meeting.
Right, and it is before that, the CSEC meeting, which is the twenty eighth.
It, I, I will echo what Cynthia said. It's not uncommon for committees to convene and vote things that might be before town meeting.
Yeah, it's actually pretty common.
Some years.
It's not desirable, but it happens.
No, no, but.
And who is presenting this at town meeting?
I, I don't know. I think we're gonna have to talk about that on the twenty sixth.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fair.
Because it's, we make, we move it, but who are the technical experts in the room who we want to help us? You know, Lori's always one for so many things, Jared's one for so many things.
All right. We'll work through it.
But I think it begins with Ms. Rainey moves that, because you're the chair.
That's usually, and they, they, they spread it around usually, but yeah.
Typically the way it sounds.
Yeah, yep, that's what moderator usually looks for. I think we've reached the end of our agenda.
We have an action item?
Oh, my gosh. People, the poor kids at the row and the poor teachers doing all this work.
Do you have the link?
So I do, and thank you very much, Lori, for putting this forward. This relates to moving back into the Thoreau. I think we don't need a long narrative on it, but Lori will have answers to any questions. It's about setting up things so that the we populate that wing. I moved that the Congress School Committee vote to approve April fourteen, two thousand twenty-two as an early release day at Thoreau Elementary School.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you to all those teachers.
Yes.
Both of my kids are in the, both of my kids are in that wing of the Thoreau school, so I've just witnessed the teachers moving their class. Now this will be the third time, so thank you to the teachers.
Yes, and to the principal and everybody.
Building looks great. We're ready to get this behind us, but unfortunately, it's one more move on them, and it's a lot.
It's a lot. It is a lot, so we appreciate all the, I know, extra work there, gonna be, going beyond that afternoon, so. All right, we'll do a roll call, just to be sure.
Anderson, I.
I was I.
Well, I am I.
Rainey, I.
Rankin, I.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Roll call, please.